I just needed the password issues.
Okay, we're all set.
Being good.
I'll call the Landscary Planning Board meeting to order for October 12th, 2011. First thing I want to point out for our audience that in case we have an emergency need to evacuate this room or building, that we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, move outside and move away from the building, don't come back into, our fire officials have instructed everyone to do so. The exits are on the right-hand side of the audience, front and back of the room, so note the exit signs. I'd like to ask for you to please rise and pledge allegiance to the American flag.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's see, two regular members, Chris Davies and Dana Coons are way on business, and I'll point Letha to vote for Chris, and I'll point Maria to vote for Dana. And we do have a quorum, so we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, six voting members, and we'll proceed with our business. Our meetings are divided into two parts, first part is administrative board work where we get our business done, and the second part of the meeting, as this being the second Wednesday of the month, that we have our continued plans, conceptual discussions, and any public hearings. Tonight we have one continued plan, and then we also have a public hearing on the 2013-2018 capital improvement plan, and we have a discussion, demolition delay ordinance, an amendment to that. So we'll proceed to administrative board work, and we'll do our intros of our new town planner, Cynthia May, and I welcome Cynthia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
And you've had, let's see, this is in your second week of being here.
Yes.
So definitely welcome, and this is part of the board, sometimes we have, we actually, if all 12 of us are here, there's a, we have a little overflow of problems, but something must be going on tonight. In fact, I saw John LaFeria today, said he was coming, but he could have something else, who knows? But maybe you just gotta give us a little brief background about yourself, and maybe like your resume in, you know, a minute and a half.
Okay, well, most recently I was a planner in the town of Bedford, and I was there a little over four years, and in Bedford we recently been, well, probably two years ago, almost now, finished the master plan process, so that I have quite a bit of familiarity with that. On the broader scale, I have a master's degree from the University of Massachusetts in landscape architecture, and about 26 years' experience both in the private sector doing design, and this is pretty much in many states, from Florida up to Maine, so, and out to the Mississippi River. And I've worked for the Regional Planning Commission in Nashua and other communities, so that's it in a nutshell.
Oh, thank you. We have many challenges before us, one big one that we probably will, I'm sure, be hearing something before the end of the year, but Andre.
Yes, sorry for being a little late, Mr. Chairman, I just had to find one thing for later on discussion, but I just want to go on to say that in addition to welcoming Cynthia to the Landscary, we had 48 applicants submit for this position, 48, and out of 48, obviously Cynthia rose to the top, and she is quite qualified, and my hometown Bedford has given me a ration of grief for taking away from Bedford, but I'm glad she landed here.
Thank you, Andre. Welcome.
Welcome. Okay, next, we have Nikon Coatings Corporation site plan extension request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you remember, the, in 2010, September 8th, 2010, the, there was an initial request to extend the site plan for Nikon for an additional year, and obviously the letter they submitted indicates that as follows, "That behalf of the client of Nikon Coating Corp., TF Moran Inc. is respectfully requesting Planning Board to consider extending the conditional site plan approval for an additional one year for the above referenced commercial site plan. Due to the present economy, our client is not able to obtain tenants for the conditionally approved commercial site development, therefore is not ready to start construction, provide financial guarantee as required as a condition of approval. TF Moran hopes that the Board finds the extension request favorable and would appreciate the town's consideration and protecting investment of this project." Steph will support this request, there hasn't been no substantial change or any change whatsoever to the zoning of that area, as well as the site plan regulations that would affect this plan, therefore, we will recommend the extension of one year.
Okay, one year from?
From September 8th.
From September 8th. It'll be September 8th, 2012. I'll take them, motions?
Actually, how is it, actually October 21st actually was approved.
Okay.
It was September 8th we reacted on it, but it's actually October 21st.
So October 21st, 2012.
Correct.
Okay. Motion?
Second.
Okay, motion by?
Second.
Second by, second by Letha. Any discussion on the motion? Sign on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extension, Chair was affirmative, motion carries, and they have an extension to?
Who made the motion?
Lynn, Lynn, second by Letha, and we've got seven voting members. Okay, next, discussions with town staff, Andre.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is another impact fee discussion item that I put on regarding a, the Route 128, Litchfield Road, Stonehenge intersection, impact fee. I believe back in the late 80s, late 90s, early 2000, there was a impact fee program put together to offset the cost of making intersection improvements and a light at the intersection of Stonehenge 128 and Litchfield Road. And we've been collecting that fee, and obviously back in 2002 appropriated money, and I think supplemented in 2004, towards the improvement of that intersection. As you all know, that intersection has been complete, we were able to get a grant, a one-third, two-third grant from the state, coupled with money that the town appropriated, and also coupled with the money that was in the off-site improvement fund that was collected from the various projects in around. My question to the board is that now that the improvement have been done, have been done, and completed, I should say, do we want to still keep that impact fee system in place, because obviously there were some costs associated with the town that was not, you know, that was not collected through impact fees, or do you want to consider that project done, therefore do away with the impact fee?
So it's not, it's not paid for yet, sorry?
It's paid for, again, it was a one, two, one-third, two-thirds grant.
Our one-third.
Although the impact, yeah, and although the, other than one-third that, you know, that the town was able, a portion of that came out of impact fees. The impact fees that were collected at the time wasn't enough for the, I guess, the development to pay for its share, but it did have a, it was used towards this project. And so the question is, is that do we want to keep that in place in order to generate the, generate the revenue to pay for its share, even though the project is done, the town can be reimbursed for the, for the share it, you know, it paid on behalf of the private, private sector, or do we just want to do away with the, with the impact fee, saying that the project is done? We were able to get a grant for a majority of it, and let's move forward.
Do you know the amount that's still outstanding on the town's one-third?
Actually, I do not, and the reason why is that I know that was a, I think it was a $1.2 million project, I think the majority, the two-thirds came from the state, the one-third, I think the town appropriated $300,000, and it later on appropriated additional funds because the project costs went up, therefore our share went up, and I believe around $40,000 from the impact fees went towards the cost of that, and basically that was just the amount of money that we collected at the time. There have been, within the last six months, there have been other developments that have paid their off-site improvement fee, and that's the second part of my question, if the board says, all right, you know what, project done, let's move forward, now the people that have paid their impact fees towards, towards that intersection, do we want to reimburse that, or do we want to apply that towards the project?
If some people paid already, other than just a few you just received, if some people paid like a year or so ago?
Correct, yeah.
Are you planning on giving them back money?
No, and that's the question, is that I, I don't know how far you want to go back, was it six months, do you want to go a year, or from the time the project was completed forward, do you, any money that's collected from that point forward?
Why is it fair for somebody that paid a year ago, and then somebody that is there now to get a pass?
Yeah. No, I, that's why I want to pose a question, is that whether or not, again, if we agree that we're going to move forward without the impact fee, do we want to reimburse, or are we just saying that from this, if we agree that we're doing away with it, then I would then move forward, as I did with the, with the impact fee on the Route 28 section that was modified, I brought that to the board, and then later went to town council, you know, with, you know, with the modification to that impact fee, I will do the same with here, if the board agrees that the project is done, no more impact fee, and also if it's agreeable that there's no reimbursement either, then?
If there's no reimbursement, what are you going to do with that money?
It just gets applied to, it just gets applied to the project, or their share, I should say, the town's share of the project.
Yeah, because by statute, basically we have six years in which to use it, if we don't use it within six years, then it goes back to whoever paid into it. I would think whoever has, you know, if we reimburse one, we reimburse everyone.
Well, technically, we use the money, I mean, the project's done, we paid the impact fee, and any subsequent impact fee pays for their share of the project, so the money has been used, so we're not in a situation where we've collected money, it's been six years, we didn't use it, therefore we give it back. This is a situation where the impact fee, I should say, the project was done, impact fee's money used, and?
This is money left over.
Money left over, you know, can also just be applied to the project, the, I should have applied to the project as the private share contribution towards it.
How many, who pays the impact fee for that intersection, is it geographic circle around the intersection?
It was, actually it was done by my predecessor, and I also, I was sanctioned by the planning board, but what they did is identified parcels around the, within a rational nexus of this, of the intersection, and when those parcels, you know, when those parcels developed, they paid their share of the impact fee towards it. Also, it came up with a per trip, so if there's a project that happens outside the, outside the designated district, but has an impact on this, on this intersection, there's a $319 per trip cost that they would pay for their share of their impact to that particular intersection.
And for six years, we have the ability to apply impact fees to that project to offset the town's, the taxpayers' share?
Correct. And the way the impact fee, at least, at least the statute is set up, is that you can set up an impact fee in anticipation of a capital project coming up, saying that, you know, we know that we're going to fix the electrical road intersection, therefore we will determine what's the town's share of that, we'll determine what the private share of that, and then based on the private share, dividend up amongst the contributors to that, to that intersection. The other way is that the town would, you know, could bond the improvements and say, all right, this needs to be done now, and based on that, determine what the private share of that would be, establish the impact fee to reimburse the town for their, for their share of the improvement. So, you know, that's, you know, the two ways that communities will look at impact fees or use impact fees towards a project.
So I'm still missing something, so we collected impact fees?
Correct.
To fund that project, the town's share of that project?
To fund the private share of the project.
The private share.
Yeah.
But we only got to about 10% of what the town's share was, it sounds like, the private contribution was only about 10% of the town's share.
Did you say that was $40,000?
About $40,000.
But the private contribution, you know, it, the state, the town paid to do the intersection, right, the private contribution was made into the town, we paid for the intersection, is that how it worked?
Yeah, they said, we were, one, we were able to get a grant for a portion of our share through the state, and then the remainder of the town's share was paid, I should say, the remainder of the town's share, and even a portion of the private share was paid through a bond that the, yeah, a bond that the town floated in order to make the project happen, and, and then whatever impact fees was collected at the time would use towards the project as well.
So the impact fees that we have collected to date have been applied to the project?
Has been applied, I should say, up until the important time when we, when we constructed a project, paid, I don't know if we paid, all the bills have been paid, but I know that the impact fee money was used, and so then, then the question came up, you know, was, do we still need the impact fee then?
It's, you know, the project's done, so, you know, so my thinking is, why do we need an impact fee, we're not going to do any more projects there, right, but then we get, we start talking about refunding money, I'm just not sure where, what, I'm trying to tie that into the discussion, the refunding of the money, especially if we still owe money on the project.
Why can't we use the impact fees that we collect going forward, because you said part of it was bonded by the town? Why can't we use that to pay the carrying costs of the bond, at least the interest portion?
Up to, up until the point where it matches the private sector's share of it, yes.
And how much more would you have to collect for it to match the private?
That, I would have to take another look at, because we collected 40,000 so far, and then, and take a look at the final cost of what the project was, and then I can determine what, what is remaining, and if the board wants to consider that, then I can bring that back to our next meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to know all the details on it.
But that's what I wanted to, you know, again, that was a, again, a project that has been done, and as we continue to evaluate our impact, our traffic impact fee system, again, that question came up, and I wanted to get it before the board, and what I'll do is I'll go back and, and take a look at the share that the town came up with, with, along with the state's share of the project, and what would be the private share contribution towards that, how much was collected, how much yet to be collected, and bring that back for our next meeting.
Any more questions from the board? Okay, and next discussion is master plan request for proposal.
Yes, master plan RFP, I just sent more of an update, that the, the RFP is on the street, the subcommittee gave us blessing, actually, the subcommittee made the refinements to the RFP, the, the master plan steering committee gave us his blessing, and that is out on the street now, so hopefully by November 4th is when all the applications are due, or should say, proposals are due, and then after that, we will, we have a subcommittee stand, on standby to review each and every one of them.
It'll be fun.
And in the meantime, we have another subcommittee as part of the master plan committee that, that met actually last night to review, we had a rather lively discussion to review what it was we wanted to get out of the phone survey that's going to occur in town, so we have some recommendations to the committee as a whole at our next meeting at the end of the month, and hopefully we can make some progress there as well.
Yes, because I know when we had, we're doing the master plan, our focus master plan for the Route 28 area in town, there was a survey also, we had some lively debates on questions and everything here, so it's, yeah, I think the questions have to be appropriate, and, you know, dislucid the information that you want, and good, good pollsters will ask the same question multiple ways to really see what people are answering, and sometimes you, you can't shortchange it, that you don't get the information you really want for something, some pollsters that probably don't have as, or are not as closely, I think it was the University of New Hampshire that did ours, and we're very happy with it.
Yeah, they're one of the three contenders, so to speak.
They did a good job, because what we, information we gathered was what we got from the survey, and also what we heard from public hearings on it also, so there was agreement, so. Any else, Andre?
No, that's it.
Okay, hey, John?
Nope.
Okay, any of the board?
Just one question, we got minutes that they sent out by Jay Trotier, and I thought we were going to vote on those tonight.
I was going to ask, because I have two, two minutes that were in the read file, one is October 3rd, 2011, which was just a very quick meeting for signing of plans, and there is a September 7th, 2011 meeting in the, in the read file, so, and also they have the nice blue stickies on them for, so, question is, the September 14th meeting?
They went out as well.
Yeah. I have, there is three.
Okay, so September 7th and 14th have been approved?
No.
No.
We need to, we need to.
Oh, they're together, thank you, Mary.
There should be three.
Okay, so I have minutes for three meetings, September 7th, September 14th, and October 3rd, and we'll do them separately, in case there are absentees that want to abstain. So September 7th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn, any discussion by the board on the September 7th meeting minutes? Sign on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extentions? Chair was affirmative, and the minutes for September 7th have been approved, and I guess Lynn can sign those. Okay, September 14th.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn, for approval of September 14th minutes, any discussion by the board? Sign on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extentions? Chair was affirmative, and, no, Chair abstains because I was not here on the 14th.
No, you weren't here.
So, motion carries. October 3rd.
Motion to approve?
Okay, motion by Mary, second by Lynn, any discussion? Sign on, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'd have to abstain.
Those opposed, say nay.
I'd have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay, yeah, because actually, the people in the meeting were myself, Mary, Tom, Rick, and Scott Benson, so.
So Laura, Maria and I abstained.
Laura, I know made a valiant attempt, because I was stuck in the roadside I-93 in traffic, and, thank you, Laura. Okay, you all the extensions? Okay, and motion carries, and actually those can be signed by Mary.
I have to sign them.
Oh, you are?
You do your copy, stretch.
Oh, okay, please throw that in the read file, I, I pulled them off so I could remember. Okay, minutes are taken care of, so, no further discussions, the board will proceed to our continuing.
Just one other question, nothing for Andre, Andre, any update on Woodmont, we're going to be seeing Woodmont coming next month, so?
I guess right now, your guess is as good as mine, I thought that was going to be coming in last month, but my, my assumption is that it probably will come in soon.
I don't have a guess, so I'm just curious if you had heard anything new?
No.
So next Friday is the deadline now, right, for, for next month?
This Friday is for next month, correct.
Day after tomorrow, or a week from day after tomorrow?
Actually, for the first meeting of?
When you see new plans at first meeting?
Would be this Friday.
November 2nd, June 8th, October 14th, that would be at 5:00 PM, and that would be like a new plan, so I'd have to come for the first meeting of the, of the month. Okay.
Especially if they submit for a formal, if they submit for a formal, then yes, then this will be?
They could come back for another conceptual discussion, which I think we've had plenty of anyway. Okay, other, okay, continued plans, Tammy, oh, excuse me, Tom.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring something up on regarding that special meeting we had, because we were a little late getting started, that because of the traffic on I-93, people getting late, me, I don't know if it's possible, but can we have special meetings where people are just by telephone?
I tend not to like to do that.
I know, but just on a special meeting, deciding plans like?
It's kind of a nebulous area, because I know in other towns, they do it like, you know, by email, which they shouldn't be doing, or by phone, but then they ratify it at the following meeting, but I think our, I think it gets into a little questionable area. I, I myself would rather not do it.
It just that if, if somebody didn't come, they, they wouldn't have had a quorum.
Yeah, usually special meetings are kind of rare, and they're only just signing the, site plan or subdivision plan that they need to have done right away, because usually we'll do it at our next, next meeting.
Yeah, just a thought, I just thought it might be assistance.
I know it sounds easier, but sometimes things that sound easy get into difficulties, but.
Okay.
Rather be on the safe side of things, that's the way. Okay, anything else?
Nevermind.
Okay, we'll go to our continued plans, Tammy Mivroni, 2004 Verbal Trust Map, Act 17, Lot 34, this is a continued public hearing for a five lot subdivision and a conditional use permit. And it was back in August that Andre, myself, John Trotier, met with both John Veroni and engineer George Chadwick, and kind of walked the roadway and everything.
If I can, if I can just briefly, again, describe to the board members also our, just where we're at with this, this was continued again from July of 2011, again, some of the background information, again, this is for a five lot subdivision at the intersection of Page and Lucas Roads, from our memo, again, the staff recommendation from Tim and I back in July 6th, there was some background information that we had shared with the board regarding multiple attempts to subdivide, excuse me, subdivide the subject property dating back to the mid 1980s, the key issue at that, at hand at that time, as well as today, is the roadways, nature of the roadways in the area, class road is a class five gravel road currently, and width of travel wave varies widely, as narrow as 12 feet in some areas, staff had consistently informed the applicant and the engineer that the board would have to determine if improvements would be required to the roadways in the areas, and again, attached to that July 7, excuse me, 6, 2011 memo was the, the history of the various plans and discussions that previous planning boards had had regarding this lot.
I think it goes back to 1986.
Correct. The board had, and in summary, the board has consistently required that the roads be upgraded prior to any submission, any subdivision of the lot. And arts correct, back in, in August, so yourself, me, and, or Andre and myself, had walked the site with, with John and George, we had some, again, walked the, the length of Page Road, again, from the intersection of Lucas up to the paved portion, looking what the obstacles were, we had met with, with George and, and John, where George had come up with a conceptual plan to do some improvements to Page Road. Since, since the last July meeting also, Public Works, we did discuss off-site improvement requirements, both with the police, the fire, and the school district, they all have submitted, again, and concur that any off-site improvement should be held to town standards, and copies of those letters are in the packet this evening. And again, hopefully that summarizes where we're at, George, I think that's where?
Yeah.
Andre, I think it's pretty much summarizes where we're at, so.
All set? Okay, yeah, my name's George Chadwick here with John Veroni.
You know, I just want to say that you, you went on the record saying that you consistently informed us that of the road, and I'd have to say that that's, that's inaccurate, so at the end, you did, but our initial meeting, the conceptual meeting, you didn't.
Okay.
We'll continue.
Yeah, John is correct, we did put together a, sort of a conceptual or a plan to sort of put the issues that we've talked about so far on paper, and if I may, just go over that real quick.
Yes.
The plan, which is up on the overhead, as well as in the board in front of you, is sort of in two parts, the bottom here is the intersection of Lucas, that's where the existing edge of pavement ends, this portion of Page is gravel, it matches to here, so when it continues along, and the existing pavement booms at that location in front of Agliese's. The initial submitted to the planning board, and the initial set of plans to the planning board after the staff, what we proposed was to give 25 feet center on the project side, and this is the project of here, on the project side, and develop a drainage swale along the frontage of Page Road. That was the initial submitted that came in front of the board. At the July meeting, we also offered, at that time it brought to our attention that maybe you that maybe additional improvements would be needed. So, at that time in the meeting, we threw out, well, how about if we give an additional 25 feet from center on the opposite side of the road, which is lands that are owned by John or his family, and improve that portion that would have a 50-foot right-of-way to a 20-foot wide gravel surface with ditches on both sides and, um, improvements would, that, you know, that follow this type of cross-section. That's what we offered at the July meeting. Not sure if the full board understood what we were talking about at that time, so I sort of wanted to make sure I got that on, on paper, so you physically saw it. Um, again, from here to here is the project's portion of Page Road. John Verani also owns the opposite side, 62 Page Road, up to here. Give you a little point of reference, right here is where the culvert goes underneath Page Road, if you've ever driven up Page Road. So it's an additional, uh, one, two, 200, almost 300 feet, 250 feet of, uh, right-of-way that John's able to give. Once we get past the point of John's property, he does not own either side of the right-of-way. So it'll be difficult at this point for John to, um, dedicate additional right-of-ways to the project. That's what we had proposed at the time of, uh, the last planning board meeting. I restated that at our site walk. Um, we did take a walk as John said, up and down Page Road. Um, we did look at the constraints. Um, constraints we noted were obviously right here at the corner of John's property. It really does neck down right in that area. Uh, stone walls get pulled tight, um, the trees are uptight to the road. It really does feel through this portion of the road that it's very tight. As you go down the road, it widens out over the bridge. Um, in building the bridge, they added additional gravels, they made it wider, so it feels that the road's, you know, wider. As you turn the corner here, right in here, it also gets tight. And again, by having additional right-of-way on, um, on John's side of the road, I think we can probably take care of that issue. And as you move along, up around what I'm following between Station 6 and 7, I know it's not stationed on your plan there, but in this area here, um, it gets very tight again. And when I say very tight, it feels tight when you drive down the road. The trees are pretty much right up to the edge of, you know, up, up to the edge of the gravel surface. Uh, in through, in through here, there's sort of an embankment on the right-hand side as you're driving, you know, toward Lucas, um, and, and it really does neck down. That's sort of a synopsis, I think, John can add any other pinch points that, that we talked about, but that's sort of a synopsis of what we encountered at our site walk. The reason we're here tonight is the board sent us a way to do this site walk, to come up with some ideas. Um, you've heard from staff basically saying nothing less than, you know, a full-blown 24-foot wide paved town road would be acceptable to them. So here we're asking, what would be fair and reasonable for this particular five-lot subdivision? I think the town has an opportunity to get additional right-of-ways and to get improvements made to Page Road. If this project doesn't occur, we're here where we are. There's five, seven houses down there now. If there's a safety issue that the town perceives, well, that safety issue exists today. So let's try to get some improvements to help alleviate at least a portion of that safety issue. Um, so after saying all that, I guess we're here to listen to the board to, uh, hopefully come up with a, you know, a compromise, something that the project can afford, something that the town can, um, get improvements made to Page Road. And, uh, I guess we're here just to, to listen.
Okay, uh, a question of, uh, John Trottier, uh, where the culvert is. That was washed out, uh, was it back, uh, 2006? When we had some of the flooding, I think we had, uh, flooding in the, um, well, the Mother's Day flood.
It was the Mother's Day flood.
And I think we had some flooding later, and then the town went in and rebuilt that, uh, that section. It was the town that, uh, did, did all that work.
Yes, we did all that, yeah.
Okay, and that was gravelled out wider than it was before?
Yeah, we opened, in that area, we opened, uh, the road as far as possible with anticipation that at least in the future, if anybody were rebuilding a road, their culvert would not have to be rebuilt. So culvert is wide enough to accept 24-foot wide road.
Mm-hmm, okay, thanks. Well, I'll, I'll go through, uh, our staff, then I'll go through the board, and then, uh, we'll put it up for, you know, the public, uh, for discussion. But I'll start with, uh, Andre.
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, as was, uh, indicated by John, we, we did walk, have a chance to walk this, um, um, Page Road to determine what level of, um, improvements or what the status of the existing road was, as well as, uh, what's needed, and, and, uh, as staff, we, we, we must concur with, uh, the various departments, fire, police, highway, school, uh, with regard to the, um, you know, the improvement of the road that's needed. Um, I, I told that the applicant that, um, you know, that, um, and Art had suggested that, uh, I contact our legal counsel with regard to this issue, with regard to what improvements could the board require, you know, should, uh, it move forward with this, uh, approval? And, and he was 100% convinced that, um, you know, that the board is in, it's in the board's purview to require the road be upgraded prior to any additional, uh, lots be, uh, added there. It's just a matter of making sure that the board addresses its responsibility when it invites new subdivisions and obviously new households onto the roadway, understanding that if nothing changes today, the conditions don't change, therefore, it's an existing condition that the, the board has, um, this town has lived with and will continue to live with. But now, when you're starting to invite new, um, households there, given the status of the road, and it, and it varies, the right-of-way varies from some areas are wide, some are very narrow, and, um, and, and, and obviously you can read the, um, rec, um, the reports from the, um, from the various boards, they have some, uh, I should say, the various departments, they have some concerns with that. So, um, that is in general the concern of the ta, of the town, and, and, um, obviously, as staff, we have to recommend to you our standard. Uh, we have no other standard, you know, for this other road, we have, I should say, we have two standards, a really wide road and a 24-foot wide road. And for this, given the level of trips that are gonna be utilizing on this road, the lesser standard would be the one that we would recommend. But, um, anything short of that, I, I, obviously, as I shared with, uh, Mr. Verani and, and George, I said, we just don't have those parameters to go any further than that.
Okay, uh, Giannis?
Uh, I don't want to say that we have had too many bad roads in town, but this is probably the worst road in town. And, uh, if we try to plow this road and the traffic is coming from the other direction, you can't pass. Uh, school buses call quite often, they have difficult time to, you know, to, to go over there. So to introduce additional subdivision over there and more traffic, I think it would be something that will have a great concern. Uh, and I would declare this road as totally substandard, probably the worst road in town. Uh, it is so narrow that, and it's gravel road, quite often we have washouts over there. And unfortunately, we don't have enough money in a, in a car first to rebuild that road and to, you know, to bring to the, to the town's standards, and I don't foresee in the near future, you know, to be able to, you know, to do it. So we're maintaining as a gravel road, that's why it's classified as a class-five road from intersection from Lucas, it's class-six road where there is a lot of variances over there, granted for people who are living over there, knowing that they will be living on the road, that will not be maintained. And, uh, that area near the, the box culvert that you mentioned, yes, it was washing out quite a bit, and then, and again, so we replaced that one, and it was substantial expense for, just for that short section to do it. So, but the road, I will invite anybody to go and see it if you have any doubt. Maybe you drove on Page Road before, but it's, it's totally substandard.
Or the last gravel road that we have.
Yeah.
It is rustic-looking, but it's not exactly safe.
That's not, that's not a road when you want to bring your car on, no.
Anything else to add, Sean? Okay, I'll, I'll go through the board, and, uh, I'll start with you, Rick.
Hey, I agree with Giannis, I've been up that road many times, and I think it should be made to town standards.
Yeah, I guess what I'm looking for is, is we really accept something, uh, let's say 20-foot or 24-foot, you know, you know, gravel. Uh, that type of thing. I know in the past we've, we have done that, uh, but it'd be way, way in the past when, uh, I think what we have, mostly gravel roads that pave now, I think, except for that one. Uh, Tom?
The improvements that you're offering, what do you expect as far as development on that? If your plans come to fruition? How many more houses are gonna be there?
Well, uh, I, right now, there's, um, it's an existing lot. And right now, it's just, the, this isn't the last lot on the road. I mean, there's, there's houses beyond this, okay? So, you know, whatever the town has as a current condition, there's people traveling on this road, and this road goes into, into Manchester, on, on Lucas as well. So, and one of those subdivisions was Evan's subdivision, that was a five-lot subdivision that's literally across the street from this, from this, this subdivision, and it occurred in the 80s, prior to that, um, culvert being fixed. But right now, you can put one lot there. Um, what I'm looking for is a five-lot subdivision.
What kind of anticipated increase in traffic do you anticipate there? If your five lots are built out and sold?
20 trips, probably? About 20 trips? Excuse me, approximately 20 trips for the five-lot subdivision?
What can you tell me? I mean, I, I imagine you've seen the letters from the police, the fire, and the school district.
Actually, we have not seen any of that yet.
Okay, well, um, they all say that they want to uphold the town, town standards. School district is concerned about accidents on roads because of narrow roads. Fire, I think, I think it's fair to say they want to be able to turn their fire trucks, their biggest fire trucks, on the road if they need to. And I'm not sure, you know, what specific the, the police need, but they're still supporting that. What can you tell me that would make me think that they're either incorrect or that they, you can accommodate what their, their concerns are?
I guess I'd first have to bring up a, a fact, and I'm not trying to be controversial at all here. Um, the project was submitted out through DRC to all the staff, all the departments, originally, and not one came back with a concern. And not till the last couple of months, after being solicited by Public Works, did they come back with a concern. So, putting that behind us, um...
And I want to make a footnote to that, too, is that when John says that, you know, we were told right along this road needed to be brought to town standards, we sat down with him and Tim and, I think, Andre in a conceptual meeting, and we proposed what we came in on July, in July, we came in with the, with the proposal to upgrade in front of these lots, and we left that meeting thinking, that was fine. So that's why we continued the last meeting, we walked away and we said, you know, could we come up with a, a, a study committee to, to, to look at what we can do here?
Let me, let me, 'cause you don't have this. Uh, this is from the fire department, uh, this is their concern. "When our apparatus is parked on the side of the road for one call taking up eight feet of roadway, and we need to allow clearance for another piece of apparatus to pass by safely to respond to another call, the town standards meet this need." And from what I understand, that's not gonna be the case on this road.
Well, again, we're proposing 20 feet wide across the area where there are existing, or where, where there will be homes. This portion of the road that we're talking about, there are no homes. And I would assume that, it...
Yeah, that's, that's the real narrow part there.
Right, right, and I would assume that any other subdivision that comes into town would have to go through the same process that, that we're going through, and the board would have an opportunity to do that. So if a vehi, you know, if a fire apparatus is in the road, um, and he's eight feet wide, I give him another 12 feet to pass another, or, excuse me, another, yeah, 12 feet to pass another apparatus beside it. Well, if the apparatus is four feet wi, uh, eight feet wide, I guess, that would be, maybe shoulders and stuff like that as well, so I would assume that they'd be able to pass by. Um, in, in this area here where there is homes. And we're talking about two homes. And the homes are located, uh, 80 feet, 70, 80 feet, at a minimum off the street, so I don't think the apparatus would be on the street anyways. I mean, it may be, maybe a pump and truck sitting out there or something like that.
If I, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if I can summarize. Right now, it's a bad road, as Giannis said, the worst, and, okay.
That is correct.
You're proposing to make it a better road, but not to what the town considers the minimum standard?
Correct, we're, we're...
And just, if, and, and I guess that the staff's position is, if I'm correct, you correct me if I'm wrong here, that we'd rather have it continue as it is versus partial improvement? Okay.
And, and to bring it to those standards, the town standards, and I was under the, I got the impression from Andre that that's your minimum standards that the town can recommend, unless it goes to the planning board and you guys decide that there's some other standard that you can live with. But they don't have the ability to recommend less than that standard. Now, right there, you disapproved a three-lot subdivision. And you, that wasn't rec, that, that didn't have to get brought up to 24-foot wide standards? I mean, like, up to...
That was actually, I think the road is, uh, is the road to standard there, Giannis? This is up where the veterinary clinic is?
Still paved section of the road, where...
It's paved, yeah.
Uh, I, you know, again, I wasn't...
Yeah, the improvements that, that Pugliese is doing along his frontage, he is doing improvements along his frontage to the, to the, for three lots at each.
So that subdivision approval, they're doing the off-site improvements?
And again, there was still not even a, close to be a section that we will have to reach fire and police and, and the plows to reach there when Johnny wants to build. And I, I just, what, what I'm only, 'cause I was asking John, was, were you informed about? 'Cause I wasn't here, but when you inform, uh, about the road is substandard. I can't imagine that somebody wouldn't tell you the road is substandard and then will have to be upgraded. You've been living in town for how many years, and you're in the real estate business. I would give both my hands and head that you know that that road would have to be upgraded if you want to do any development, because you know our regulations in and out for all these years. So I'm surprised that you would say that I didn't thi, I think everything was all right, I could build on that road and that subdivision.
And that's exactly why we went in for a conceptual plan, Giannis. And I was surprised that the subdivision got approved up here. That's why I went in there, and I thought that your position changed on things. And, and Art?
Yes.
The, in front of Pugliese, he's, he's saying that they're, they're improving in front of Pugliese's. You're acquiring on this, or what town's requiring on this is that it gets improved all the way down to Page Road, which isn't in front of lots. If you want me to improve in front of my lots, I'll do that.
Yes, and I think one of the concerns is that, you know, I don't, uh, well, I think part of the property, uh, is a conservation-type property. I think it's owned by the Merrells. But that, that, the narrow section is probably the most, you know, the critical part, and that's outside of your, your property.
The area south of the, of where the culvert is. It gets very narrow.
Yeah, yeah.
George says it's...
But I think what, what, what John has proposed, at least graveling it to, you know, a better condition than it is right, uh, right now.
Along his frontage?
Yes, along his frontage.
The concern, again, Art, though, is south of that.
Yes, and then with Pugliese, it was between, you know, uh, the intersection of Page and their, their property where their, their traffic is traveling. So they wouldn't be going any further, uh, you know, up Page Road at all.
As long as they don't take a, a left going out of their house.
Uh, yes.
And, and I'd still, you, you telling me that that's up to 20-foot, 24-foot wide town standards?
No, I won't, I believe that the existing pavement out there is 17, you're adding a three-foot gravel shoulder.
So, see, but you're not bringing it up to the same standards that you're asking us to bring it up to. And that's what I'm saying.
So, so it's probably about 20 feet there that is passable, and, uh...
And that's what we're...
It, yeah, yeah, I, I hear it. Yeah, yeah, I, I hear it. Andre?
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I, I think this is, this is the same juncture, I believe, the board has come to over the last twenty-five years, or twenty-six years with regard to this, this section of the road, is that I know there's been other subdivisions proposed for this from nineteen eighty-five to present. And I think we come to the same juncture as to how do you handle the increased, obviously increased lots being proposed off of there and the, and the condition of the road. The boards have been grappling with it to a point where I think they were trying to put together a, an impact fee or some kind of improvement fee or whatever to accommodate the, you know, the improvement, but I, I think with this, I think past boards, as well as this board, has grappled with the same thing, that it's, it's a substandard road. And then when you add more lots in there, it's gonna add more lots, it's gonna add more trips, it's gonna add more responsibility to the town. And if they're, if our town departments are saying, but the, the boards, the, the road's insufficient, or substandard, then something has to be done to, you know, for the road, and, 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 and I think there's a self, there's a few options that you have. Either you accept the road as it is, which past boards have not done. Accept a lower standard for the roadway with the board has the purview to do, and I hope that would be based on something. Or three, it's a premature scattered development as was determined in the past. Meaning that if one lot, if one lot, if they wanted to develop the one lot that they have there right now, they're able to do so. Typically, a lot generates ten trips per household, and, and one PMP car trip per household. So this has the ability to generate fifty daily trips and five PMP car trips.
I appreciate the, the police, the fire, and the school districts, you know, response. But I'm not sure they're answering the question that I want to answer. It's terrible now. You could have some improvement, or do you want to keep it terrible? Versus whatever additional, you know, factoring in whatever additional trips there are gonna be on this for the, the minimal improvement.
I think their concern again, Tom, was the increased usage of the road.
And that, and, and that offsets. Because right now, they can't do what they're complaining about anymore.
John, you wanna get the mic around there?
Yeah.
Please.
They have difficulty turning the, their apparatus around.
Yep.
Okay, if we do not, you know, if, if, if we, forgetting the trips, if, if those improvements are made, would they be able to turn their apparatus around?
Well, again, Tom, and that's where, that's where the pinch point again is between, is south of the culvert. It's a lane that, that Verani doesn't have any control over, again, without him doing the, the research and determining where the right of way is and what can actually be done out there. And he's not proposing.
He's what? He's not proposing to do.
Also not proposing to improve the worst section to reach those new development, to reach that new development. That's, I think, the issue is, that to reach that development, you have to go through terrible section of the road that I don't know if you drove that road. Did you drive the road?
No.
Well, you have a vertical walls of the embankments that if they are with the snowbanks, you barely can drive through.
Maybe he can make a deal with somebody.
That's why we, we have no problem to with the further development area and additional traffic if the road is improved to the, to the town standards.
No, I, I understand, and, and I appreciate your, your essentially, you know, view with the Aletta. But I, I'd kinda like to hear from them. If they, if they're the view that it's gotta be all or nothing, that's fine, and that, that's, that's the standard for me. But it, I mean, you've got a terrible situation here. You've got it, the worst road in town, and you can marginally improve it. He's gonna add trips to it. You know, do the math. Is it something you want to do, or, or if the fire department says, no, we don't want it to, we don't, we don't even want to consider it, then that's fine, then I've heard from them.
Tom, I think the bottom line is if we don't, if we don't, if we agree that it has to be at town standards and they don't want to do it at town standards, then they can't have a five lot subdivision. They can only develop one lot.
But, but Mary, my, my concern is this. I don't think the letter, as it's written, is addressing the issue.
No, I understand what you're saying.
And that's all I want to know, is, do they want to, do they want it, to leave it as it is as a substandard road, or do they want to say, we'll take some improvement?
So, if, can I just understand?
The only improvements that are being proposed, again, Tom, though, are along his frontage.
Well, but they, but you, but you can tell them, you know, if you want to go anywhere, you're gonna need A, B, and C, and if you're not willing to do C or can't get C, then it's, deal's over. Bye-bye, let's go on to the next thing.
Can I ask a question?
If I may just clarify one point. Staff has said twice that we're not proposing those improvements. Like, the purpose of the meeting tonight was to come up with a compromise. We're willing to do something. John said it last meeting, he said it in the first meeting, willing to do something. This is just a picture to bring us where we are today. And, you know, we're willing to, I mean, if, if we can improve that, you know, portion to a, you know, sixteen foot wide gravel road, eighteen foot within the right of way that's there, he's willing to do it. But he just, with the project, he just cannot afford to pay for a twenty-four foot wide pay for, for two thousand feet, nineteen hundred and fifty feet. He just can't do it.
You just talked about that section right there. It's not that, the narrow part at all, because that's not your property or anything.
It, it's not, but we may be able to do something within that right of way.
Okay.
We don't know what that is yet.
Okay, that's what we're gonna search for, I guess.
And we had some discussion, Andre, about, you guys were just talking about earlier about the impact fees, and creating an impact fee for that road. Maybe that's something we could do, for the section we can't control.
Yep, that's a possibility. Laura? Okay, I, I'm gonna come to the board anyway, so. Anything else, Tom?
No.
Harry?
Can I just get some clarification as far as what you're proposing right in front of your property? Are you saying that you'll bring it to twenty foot paved standard? You know, with, with all of the stuff that you require for all of your layers and everything, paved section in front of your property? And then you'll, the gravel would be sixteen feet beyond that?
Well, actually, I should be letting my engineer speak, but in front of our property, we were, we were doing a twenty foot. Yeah, okay, go ahead.
What has been proposed to date is a twenty foot wide gravel surface, travel way, gravel surface across the frontage of his property, where he is able to improve both sides to get the fifty foot right of way. He's also proposing additional right of way, twenty-five feet on his side, in order for the town to collect additional right of ways in the future, in order to improve the road. Again, he does not have ownership of this side of the road.
Okay, and just as one board member, I would not consider, I would not approve or consider approving anything that does not include paving that section that's in front of your, your lots, at the very least, just so you know.
Would, just to continue that, that, that issue or that idea, would you accept the twenty foot paved surface across the frontage of his lot?
I would be willing, I might be willing to accept that. We've done that before in the past, and to, and to get some improvements on the road, I might be, personally, just one person.
We, we've done this graveling in the past at some point in the time, in the future, when the town has the money, it has done the paving of it. But usually a good, good gravel road is, you know, this is a situation here, because you can't develop very high speeds unless you're crazy.
Right, but I'd still rather see them come up to the standard of a paved, but that's just me.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, some good, good gravel roads in Vermont, so.
We're not in Vermont, we're in New Hampshire.
So when did the Puglisi development happen, subdivision happen?
Well, two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, and I don't recall the discussion we had on the road at that time. Do you have a, a quick summary by any chance of what that was?
I don't, off the top of my head. Lynn?
And I know there was some discussion earlier about other gravel roads in town. Are there other gravel roads? I think it was, at least, isn't Watts Road?
Jerry Lane.
Watts Road, Jerry Lane is a class six road. The only other, Bruce, Jerry Lane. Watts, yeah, or excuse me, not Jerry, yeah, Watts, and then, and then there's one other one.
Is there a possibility down the road, we'll be looking at the same situation on, on Watts Road, same questions?
We already did, we already have, and we, for the last, you know, two years, we, we informed the, the future, even before the person bought, that there would be a, he will have to improve the road, and we are doing the same thing, and recommending that we'll have to be upgraded to, you know, to town standards, twenty-four foot wide road, because, you know, that's actually, that's a minimum that you want to have, you know, for, for, for the road.
Is there any specialized maintenance equipment you need to maintain a gravel road?
Oh, it's definitely more maintenance than, than, than a paved road. You're talking about washouts, you know, and then regrading the road. And in that area, as you could see, there is no even room for building any swales, absolutely nothing, so the water runs wherever it wants. And if we'll introduce more residents over the living, we will be getting more calls to come in and fix the road, more pressure to build the road, because now we introduce more, and we don't have money to, to build these roads. So that's the, that's the catch twenty-two for us, that.
Does it mean keeping a piece of equipment specifically to keep the road graded?
Right now, we don't have a grader, so we would have to, you know, hire a grader operator to come, and, you know, we don't have this equipment right now to grade them.
That's it for right now, what?
Okay, Laura?
It's not easy when you can't find a good way out, but I, I'm I'd really like to see at least some access to the area, you know, regardless of what you can do right in front of your, right in front of your place. If there isn't decent access, I, I can't see relaxing the standards, all that. I mean, I, I can't see building five more houses if you can't improve the access to the site. I just think it's an invitation to liability problems and risk for a whole bunch of different areas. I think there's a big difference between an existing situation or a development that happened in the eighties and, and starting this fresh right now. Now, you don't have control over that, that stretch that leads to the part in front of your, what you're proposing to improve, but I, I just don't see the point of improving an area that's inaccessible except over a terrible road. Sorry, I wish I could think of a better solution.
I, I, I share similar sentiments to Laura and some of the others' opinions by the board, but I, I do have a question. This road, has it ever been discussed, either this, the length of this road or part of this road been discussed as a one-way? Because you're telling me that it's skinny in parts, to the point where you can't have two-way traffic. So, is it possible at some point, point in the roadway to make it a one-way?
The problem with the one-way, though, Letha, is again, if, so if somebody's coming out of where Johnny lives, at, at the intersection of Lucas and Page, so if it, just to you, if it's one-way in a northerly direction, they end up having to go out, take that right.
Oh, I understand it's not convenient.
All the way to Manchester.
I understand it's not convenient. I'm just, you know, in the, in the you know, the idea of, of searching for solutions, you know, begs the question, can we consider that? And would that be something anyone would consider?
No, we didn't, for Page Road, we had some other roads that I was suggesting to make a one-way, but not for Page Road, because again, the one-way would be pretty long. One-way is not short, that you could find very quick, you know, turn around and then, and make it back. So for the residents, you know, whoever wants to travel will have to travel substantial distances. And again, I, we can look at, not every lot can be subdivided, and, you know, built if you don't do the improvement. So there are lots in town everywhere that, unfortunately, for different conditions, if there's a ground conditions, water condition, ledge, or accessibility to that lot cannot be subdivided to further development until those conditions are changed.
So, if we all agree that this is a, a poor road in town, and there are others, I'm sure, where do they fall on the list of priorities to get fixed and to be funded to be fixed? I mean, is this just a, a black hole that we talk about every year, that, oh, yeah, we acknowledge it's a problem, but we don't do any? I, I realize there's, there's money involved, and, and that needs to be lobbied for, I understand that, but has this been, this as well as other roads been put on a priority list?
You'll be voting maybe for CIP for the next couple hours, maybe you can add a few zeros to the road management, and we will have money for building the roads, but right now, I don't see. Yeah, would be, I always had that on the list to the build that road, but, and I fully understand that five lot subdivision cannot support that kind of expense of building that. That's why I'm just saying that I understand, but I also understand that not every piece of land can be developed.
And also, the town has, to me, a certain amount of responsibility, because the existing traffic is basically the town's responsibility. So like, when we have impact fees, the impacts are on additional traffic that are caused by those impacts, and the existing traffic is the, the town's responsibility.
I think, I think what, what Anna was pointing out, if it's a scattered and premature development, and then we allow for stuff like that and something happens, how did you allow for that kind of development and going to, to build farther in the area that it, it has such a poor access?
Yeah, unless it's based upon the town's ability to, you know, make a contribution or something to it. I mean, that's, that's one part of one thought, I should say.
My concern is the precedent that would be set for any future developments. So I'm, I'm sorry, but that's where I stand.
I, I would have to say I agree with Letha and Laura. You know, I, I wish, I wish I was hearing that our town was planning on improving that road soon, because then I think maybe there could be a happy medium. And it sounds like, it sounds like it's not on the, the next couple of year plan. I, I think of if, if they, if you build it, they will come, you know, I almost wish that we could improve that road sooner to, to make it, to make it better for development. But as it stands right now, I, I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable voting for the road being less footage than what, you know, would be safe for the community. So I kinda feel the same way. I would, I would love to see the development, but I, I don't think we can do it with the road the way it sounds like right now.
Okay, to the board, I mean, we're gonna have more discussion on this. I just want to open it to any abutters or anyone from the public who has any input, questions, comments, concerns, if you can help us out.
John Farrell, Forehand, Park Drive. So, I'm with Mr. Frida. Nobody's answering the question. You know, he asked a reasonable question, all right? You've asked the life safety people, they say they want it to town standard. Do they want something that will get them in there better than what they have today? And nobody answers the question. Everybody just toes the line and says it's town standard. Do they want something better or not? And I think you need to get that answered.
Yeah, I think probably, yeah. I think we'd have to go back to our police, fire, to really get the realistic answer, because I think what, what Tom has presented is certainly a very fair, fair question, that we're getting, getting an improvement on this, and, you know, if we could come to some, like, meeting of the minds on what to do with the worst section, if John can, you know, do something there, and maybe the town can do something also, since we are gonna be discussing the
CIP.
CIP for road improvements. John?
I mean, I just want to bring it back to when we first came in. These lots are, we all live, my family lives up here, and I have two children. These lots are lots that I'm subdividing now because they're road front lots, they don't expire, so I wanted to grant those to my kids. When they go to college, they can sell them, they can do whatever, they can, they can live there. This is an immediate subdivision. I'm gonna be spinning around for, you know, to sell. What I'm trying to do, and I think I'm being very, very reasonable, I know I'm not bringing it up to town specs, but even just thinking about town specs on that road, you're gonna be going from a little road to a huge road out in the woods. And, you know, what I'm doing is I'm giving right of way. Mary, if it's, if you want pavement in front of those, in front of the lots, and I'm actually subdividing, I could do that. And, you know, if you could, if you create some sort of like impact fee, outside impact fee, I'd even contribute my share to the remainder of the road. I don't know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work with the town, but to build a million dollar road that I think is gonna, personally, I think is gonna be out of place for five lots, when I can put one there, when it's an existing problem for the town, there's residents down there right now. I'm just, I, I think what I'm offering is making. I'm just, I, I think what I'm offering is making it a, a better place, you know, and, and if I was just simply a developer and I looked at that, I'd be going, no way, you crazy? I, I'm out of here, I'm gonna go do another project. But I live here, I lived in the town, born in the town, and I live down that section of the road and, so, I don't know.
So right now, the proposal is to gravel at twenty feet from intersection of Page.
He just said he'd pave it.
Oh, okay. Gravel and pave, okay.
In front of those lots, sure.
Down to there, would you be willing to do anything through that, the real bad section of it?
Well, when we met out there, the bad section, where it's supposedly choked down, was right after the power line, which is gonna be.
Even down the bend there is not, not, wasn't, wasn't too bad.
Right.
It, it's a lot better than the area that, where you don't own. That, that's, that's the worst section. I don't know if we can do anything there and I think whatever happens there is gonna be expensive.
Well, what I'm saying is that I'll give you the right-of-way, I'll do the improvements in front of the lots and then, you know, there's an impact fee or something for my portion for the remainder, you, the town can do it.
Yeah. What could we do to set up any impact fee for that area, Andre?
Well, to set the impact fee, obviously, you, you, you know, you'd need to identify what the cost, the total costs are to improve the road and then identify what potential development can occur off of there and come up with a per trip cost based on that. But, but I, I guess the fundamental question comes back to what, what Tom asked, is to, as to, you know, what standard would the, does the, if I understand your question, what standard does the fire department, police department need to have in order to perform their services? And the response was the town standard. And I, and again, the scenario that I, I presented to the board earlier was that if there's a lesser standard that the board is willing to, to move forward with, because as you know, we, we grappled long and hard to get a, a, a new town standard, a town road standard for a low-density road, and that was twenty-four feet. And we, and that's down from our twenty-eight-foot ride road. And so we, we battled for probably a good two years in order to get that standard. Now, are we looking at another lower standard than that?
Well, didn't we, when we were talking about that elderly subdivision up on, up on.
Oh, Sider Mill.
Sider Mill. We were talking about a twenty-foot road there because of how much land they had to begin with. Because it was an entry, you know, it was just like an internal roadway.
Actually, that, that went from twenty-eight-foot ride down to twenty-two, twenty-four.
I thought it was twenty. Well, I guess.
If I may.
Sure.
What I understood that Tom wanted to find out from the fire department, police department, if some improvements that would be done is better than not. That was basically the question. If they will do some improvements, now, do you guys still opposing that or, and with the additional subdivision over there, but there'll be some improvements versus none? Because if he's not doing anything, it will be none. If it's only one lot that he can get the permit to build on it, one lot, build a house over there as existing right now. And, but again, I just want to stress that the improvements that they are being proposed, so if that stretch for the frontage, twenty-four foot wide road, paved road to our standards, however, the rest, there are non-improvements being proposed. You're not proposing to do anything else, you're proposing only, only on one, one side and that's not even enough to carry all the way to grant additional right-of-way, you know, for future improvements that, who knows when, when we'll have the money to build or, so I think if, if you can wait for your kids, when maybe you will get another couple million bucks and we'll rebuild that road, then you will have that on silver platter because you will have that road built.
Maybe the case.
And they might, they might still, you know, be interested to live in London area and the road will be done over there. But right now, I can't promise that I will have, you know, because if that bond will pass, we will have right now a million dollars that, you know, I have already different, you know, roads lined up that we want to do, but this is definitely a road that will be on a list to, you know, to improve in the future. But not right now.
I, I think the first part of his question was accurate, that, you know, you're asking if there is some other, you know, if any improvements would be acceptable to, would better the situation to the fire department, but when you're asking to what standard and you only have two standards, twenty-eight foot and twenty-four foot, they can only answer, well, it's either twenty-eight foot standard or the twenty-four foot standard versus asking is it, if any improvements, you know? That's the situation you're in.
Yeah, part of the question is, I mean, even going to, you know, the twenty-foot, would that be acceptable, looking at, looking at the current condition of it, because the twenty-foot gravel and paved is, is a definite improvement and would, would, you know?
But if you would, if you would see the area, what is with the banks and how you have to open that when it's so narrow, it's like a tunnel over there. So you can't have, you, you're talking about, again, fifty-foot right-of-way, opening the road, no matter what size of road you build, because you need drainage system over there. Right now, the water is just running right on the edges and we have to keep going grading. So that's, he's not proposing any improvements in the area that we're just fighting every year, try to maintain it. So I, again, it is probably the worst road and substandard road for, that I can just try.
Because the problem being, Tom, is that they're gonna say, you know, something better than nothing. Well, what are we talking about, something?
Well, there's a twenty feet, twenty-four feet, a twenty-eight feet. What do you propose?
Well, they, they're saying twenty-four.
They're saying twenty-four.
That's what, that's what.
No, who's saying?
Fire.
The applicant?
No, that's what's fire and safety.
Okay, and what are they saying, twenty?
They're not proposing to do any improvements. It's the worst section.
Yeah.
That you can't get.
Well, let's take the, the section they're proposing first, okay? We'll leave the, the worst section. What are you proposing on the section that borders the, the potential five lots? Twenty feet?
Twenty feet of paved surface.
Okay. Now, is twenty feet acceptable by, it's not acceptable by the town because it's either twenty-four, twenty-eight, right?
Right.
Okay. And, so I guess that, the first question is, would we even consider twenty feet? Or, or maybe a better question is, can you go to twenty-four? Or are you legally unable to go to twenty-four? Forget the money, just say legally.
In front of my land, I could probably legally go to twenty-four.
Okay.
I'm not willing to do that.
You're not willing to do that?
It's, it's, it's just out of place for that, for the neighborhood and for the, the division, subdivision, so.
Okay.
Is Patriot a historic road?
No. No, nothing.
But you will.
We could, we could come up with some, some history. It probably is, is the, it's probably scenic because it's narrow and it's gravel and, you know, sometimes those are scenic roads, but yet there's a, there's a big safety thing.
That's the only one.
There's only one car a day going, going through, that would be one thing, but we get multiple cars.
I think it's scenic, I live over there, but.
And it also keeps people out of there because they aren't gonna go over.
It used to be a stagecoach road, actually, and White's Tavern.
So it is historic.
Okay, we can't tamper with it then.
No, we can pave, we can pave it.
So you're proposing twenty feet and would, does the board even want to consider twenty? Have we, or have we, can we consider twenty?
We probably could, but it'd be outside of our spec. And I think we, we probably, by rights, would have to have justification for, for doing it. I mean, it's been a proposal to, to us to, for twenty feet, that, that twenty feet is a definite improvement of what, what is there. That would be in our eyes, that wouldn't be in our, our specifications at all, it wouldn't be from the advice of our town staff at all.
And that would be just for the five lot area, correct?
It'd just be for the five, five lot area.
And then beyond that.
Beyond that's what?
I'll give you the right-of-way to go build to town standards and if you want to do some sort of impact, and Yanos keeps on pointing out the road beyond it, I'll pay my share for that road beyond it, for the impact fee.
Now, if I could ask Yanos a question. Assuming you were gonna build the rest of the road, okay, what would it cost you to obtain the right-of-way that he's gonna give you?
Well, I would negotiate to get for free, you know, to get the frontage to the other people.
Given, given, given the treatment here, I don't think he's gonna be going on that road.
I would always approach people and most of the time, we were able to, to get the right-of-way by improving the road, getting the right-of-way. I, I, the only thing that, that impact fees for future development, now, how much can be developed over there? So the impact for each house could be tremendous because of the cost of building that road. So, that, that's what I don't see this as like, that we have potential development in the areas that could bring enough impact fees to contribute to this. So if you're five houses and there could be only ten houses built over there and it costs, you know, so much, watch out because if I'm willing to pay that impact, it could be tremendous amount of money to, to pay for that, so I.
I, I think, yeah, I mean, everything you need to look at, I'm, I'm open to that, to that idea and, but, but, but also I'll stop it. There's three hundred acres behind that road. So, I mean, you know, there's.
Is that the part of conservation land over there from the, on the southern park? You own the south and the, and the north part, near Lucas intersection, but the rest I think is a conservation land.
And, and the rest of the land is Evan's industrial park and you can't tell me that Evan's industrial park, they're never gonna take a, a right going out of there.
They're not gonna tie to this road at all, they are all coming from the other direction, coming to, you know, to Clark Road, so all that area is gonna empty to Clark Road.
No, that's not accurate because it's right off of Page on both sides is commercial land and I think you guys are seeing a subdivision there.
Yeah, I think we did subdivide as part of Evan's commercial.
No, there, there is a potential for, for trips to access via Page Road.
But that's.
No, this gets to, yeah, this gets to a point of saying, you know, realistically, where are they gonna go? I mean, if, if something industrial goes there, are they gonna go down Page Road, down Lucas and then do a residential development, they get back, they get into Manchester? They're not. I mean, they're not. Most of the traffic study we've seen, they all go to the light and they, especially in that corner, they all go to the light and then they disperse from that point on.
So, so they would go down to Page, Page Road and then travel down.
They'll be, they'll be going to Rockingham Road to, to their license, which is approved. That was the whole reason of building those lines and building intersection.
And that's.
For the future people.
They don't have to spend the impact fees.
Okay, well, you can. And, and that just gets to the point on the impact, I mean, we can develop an impact fee for this and if there was a potential of, of, of more development, you know, there is potential more development on there now realistically, how many of those are gonna be taking, going on the Page Road and taking a right to go north, I guess that would be north up at Page Road? And I'm just not sure, I just don't think there's, there's a whole lot of trips, therefore, I just don't know how much, you know, development and trips it would.
Pretty cost prohibitive to put houses there?
Well, once we, you know, in order to even, even delve into the concept of impact fees, we have to know one, what, what would be the cost of upgrade the road. I mean, if, if, if only a portion of the road is gonna be upgraded, you know, basically in front of, in front of the five lots and then the remainder is gonna be upgraded, you're still looking at a substantial amount of cost in order to do that. And then again, you know, ten lots or, or say, say twenty lots, that's still a lot of money if it's a million-dollar project, as is indicated by John. I said, it's a million-dollar project, you get ten lots or twenty lots, you're looking at a lot of money per trip.
If the road's a million dollars for somebody to undertake to, to do the whole road, what's it, what's it gonna cost the town if he does, which looks like about half the road, the area for the five lots? For example, let's say magically you got money to do it and that's the first road on the list. He's already done half the road. What's it gonna cost you?
Is that what's, what's been proposed?
If it was million, there would be half a million, but.
What, what? Okay, no, that's fine. That's, that's, that's good for me.
Yeah, but I don't think it would be, the improvements for those in front of lots will be half of the, a road will have to be improved over there, that will be, it would have to be upgraded.
Well, it seems to me that if, if you're doing it in two stages, that's foolish. It seems to me it'd be a lot cheaper if you did it all at once. Am I right?
Oh, many roads we were trying to, you know, build in stages because we didn't have money to do that.
Right, but. But here's a person that might be contributing fifty percent of the money to build that road.
How are we getting fifty percent?
I'll take fifty, I'll take half a million dollars, Johnny, you know, you have one vote for sure.
Well, I'm just looking at the distance.
No, it's a, it's a much more than a.
All right, how much?
It's all that other road too, the town.
Yeah, you're talking about.
Well, then what is it? What's the number?
Two thousand feet, George. From two thousand feet, I mean, we're throwing out a million dollars, I don't think it's a million dollars to build that road. I mean, that'd be five hundred bucks a foot to, to rebuild a gravel road, an existing gravel road.
Cow pasture that has to be built full base, it's cost one point six million dollars for mile of road to a mile of road. That's twice as much as this.
No, but I'm just saying.
Well, it's eight hundred thousand.
Yeah, so.
But it's even less than that. I think we're probably talking six hundred thousand dollars maybe to do this. And another thing to mention, John's family owns, what was it, a hundred and eighty acres out there? You know, we talk about three hundred acres or whatever, including Evans and all that, but from here that way, there's a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty acres that we told you? What's the number?
I don't know. Yeah, I own fifty.
You, yeah, you own fifty, it's, I mean.
Is it all buildable though?
Not every inch of it, I'm sure there's wet out there and stuff like that and, but, yeah, it's buildable. I mean, some of it's zoned industrial, some of it's zoned residential, you know, it's, there's land out there.
Yeah, well, that just goes to the point that this, there's, where, these aren't the only lots, there's some, you'd be able to subdivide, but, I don't know where it's going. I do, I do remember. The, you know, when you talk about the, what's that? When you talk about the impact fees, I mean, and you talk about the condition of the road, I mean, we talk about, well, you know, I mean, I'm contributing something to it. If I walk away from the project, there is no public, I mean, there's no private contribution. So you still have the mess of the road and the town has to fund a hundred percent of it.
Well, I know, the town, yeah, right now, the town doesn't have it as a priority on its list of roads to be fixed, is what I'm hearing, right?
But there's residents that live down there.
Yes, correct.
And they could come back town, meeting with a petition.
Sure. You know, I'd love to see him.
Yes, they're right.
Because I'd vote for him.
Andre?
I just want to make sure I just clear as to the extent of the improvements that are being proposed. If you were to start from the intersection of Lucas Road and, and hand down, what are you proposing, George? The improvements?
After tonight, John has agreed for five hundred feet from the intersection of Lucas, across the frontage of the proposed subdivision to right there. You're willing to build a paved twenty-foot wide surface.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, clear, because we, we've been referring to as a half the road would be done, we're not talking about half, we're just talking about the, the frontage of the five lots.
We didn't say half the road.
Okay. I was just being banted around, that's all. So it's, it's not half the road.
Well, because I think, Tom, you're in misunderstanding, that whole top road is an extension of the road.
Mm-hmm.
So it's only a quarter of the road that they're gonna.
But whatever it is, I mean, whatever road Yanos fixed last year, I think that he didn't get, he paid, he fixed a hundred percent of the road and it cost the town a hundred percent of the road to repair it, right? Pick a road, any road you fixed, you, we paid for the whole thing, the town. And my point here is, here you've got somebody, a private developer paying some of it. Now, I guess the question is, do we want to go down this road and look at this or do we want to just say, fine, just leave it like it is? That's your choice. I mean, all the rest of this is just noise, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I mean, George estimated six hundred thousand to, to bring up to, basically, was it gravel twenty feet?
Twenty foot.
Yep.
But there is a road there and it's not town standard now.
He's talking paved, why do you keep saying gravel?
I like gravel roads.
Well, I'm sorry.
Okay, gravel part of it and paved in front of, you know, John's property. So there's six hundred thousand, he's probably willing to do, that's maybe like, like half of it.
Please, please don't, don't, don't throw that. Like six hundred thousand dollars, this is estimate that I don't want to even use for any, any numbers because it could be very misleading, the cost of building right of, you, you, I don't know, I don't know the ledge over there, I don't know the drainage, I don't know what have to be built over there, so, and how much man will have to be purchased, so that number is just purely, you know, thrown out.
So Yanos, you have to come up with a number so that people can come to town meeting with a warrant. Okay? Okay?
And also we need a number if we're gonna do, uh, impact fees. So we know what to, to apply it in, so.
So do you just wanna get a consensus for the board? Because this is just still a conceptual discussion, isn't it?
No, this is a public hearing. Uh, we have a decision to conditionally approve or to deny with, uh,
Um, right now though, it's not, it would not be at a, uh, condition to even conditionally approve of it.
Oh, okay. So I mean, probably our best bet would be to, to continue and then try to get some idea of the cost to do the whole, whole thing. Probably, and I think Tom's got a very valid question on what can we, can we live with? Because it is making improvement, it's making it better than it is, but, uh, we do, do nothing and let's say deny it. We're stuck with the same situation there. Let's say if we, we approved it with, with, with conditions, we'd at least be, you know, partway there.
With additional traffic and additional complaints.
Yeah, and I heard a twenty trip increase and then I think Andre mentioned about a fifty, fifty, fifty trips.
Daily trips, yeah, and, and, and increased responsibility, I mean, um-
So the fifty, fifty trips is on top of how many trips there now?
I just wanna point out, we're still talking about the twenty feet though. We keep, you know, we, we got a little caught up now on the cost of doing the whole road, which I'd love to see the whole road done if we had the money, so. But we're still talking about the twenty feet now. You know, we haven't gotten past that. I also wanted to bring, uh, I know twenty four, you, Andre had said you got to a point where you accepted twenty four feet. Is there anywhere in between twenty and twenty four that, that can even be talked about? We haven't even brought that one up.
Yeah, I mean, we really haven't talked about twenty-
I, I, I don't, I'm just trying to find any kind of happy medium about footage. We need to get back to the footage because I think that's where we're a little hung up here.
Yeah, that's sort of, I agree. And that's really the crux of why we're here tonight, is try to get a consensus of the board. Is it gonna be a full town standard road at twenty four foot wide paved? Or are you even amenable to something less? And I think we can all work to come up with what that something less is, if you're willing. But if we poll the board and the board says, nope, our standard's twenty four, that's what it is, then we got our answer.
Yeah, that, that's, that's the guidance we've came here.
Yeah, I, I think we gotta have some, some flexibility. I mean, I could live with, uh, even, you know, twenty foot gravel. And I mean, we've done it way in the past, but, yeah. But I have to condition that upon, uh, the paving of, in front of John's property, so.
There you go.
So can, can I make a motion that we continue this public hearing to the next meeting?
Yes, I have a motion.
Because I think we have a, you have an understa, we have questions that we have to have answered first before we can decide, before we would be able to give you a definitive answer.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I mean, I don't think we're going anywhere else besides, they're willing to say, right now they're saying twenty feet paved in front of the five lots, twenty feet gravel beyond, rights away, and we're gonna ask the question.
Well, we're gonna come back, we're gonna get some answers on, on the roadway as a whole. But I, I'd also, I'd look to you as, as a to-do to say how much you're willing to bend on that twenty feet. Because from where I sit, I'm, I'm not comfortable with the twenty feet based on recommendations of staff and, and where we've brought the town standard to. I suppose I'd be more willing to consider it if the rest of the road were fine and standard, but in this case clearly it's not. So I, I would ask that, that you come to the next meeting with a, an idea in your head as well about what you're, you're willing to come to. And if twenty feet is what you're willing to, then that's, that's your answer.
Well, that, that's my answer.
That is your answer, okay.
I mean, that, so that's, and that's where we're, so, we're not, I'm not prepared to go beyond twenty feet, all right? And that's what we are trying to get from the board tonight. Are you gonna say, yeah, we want town standards at twenty four feet, or we're willing to work with you? If you're willing to work with me, then give, give me some guidance as to who to work with and we'll, we'll submit the plan after that. If, otherwise, I can't go forward.
Mr. Chair, could I suggest that everybody take a drive out to Page Road too, on the board? So that you have an idea of what the road looks like?
Well, I mean, some, some people have, but some people have not. I would need to do that.
Definitely, uh, definitely drive it, uh,
I mean, that'll give us a better idea.
Right, right mark and then walk some of it to take, to take a close, close look.
And, and Mary, I think that's a great idea. And take a look at the subdivision you just approved a few years ago, right in front of this, with this, this road, that's the issue. And you'll see it's, it is paved, but it's no different, so.
I mean, the reason I suggested twenty foot because I think it's a lot better than what we got there now. Uh, at least it'd be improvements, not the town spec, but it's, it's an improvement. Yanos?
Eh, I think it's a great idea of, of members to visit the site. And I would strongly recommend that not to go to their standards of twenty feet. We discussed this so many times already before when we developed standard of twenty four feet. Plows with the wing, when you want to plow, that's seventeen feet, just to put it down here. Eh, picture yourself when you're parking in a stall and the parking is nine feet. So you're talking about eighteen feet and you want the traffic to move and the truck to go in a, in that kind of narrow environment. That is way substandard, twenty feet for, for a road. So I, as a public works director and town engineer, I would strongly recommend not to develop that kind of standard.
Okay.
I think Mike wanted to say something.
Okay, uh, Mike Smeltz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick items. A bit of history. When we did the twenty four, when you agreed to the twenty four foot entryway at the elderly housing proposal project, that was done on the basis of a stream crossing and the Conservation Commission's request to make that crossing as narrow as possible so that critters had a better chance of getting, getting through cover, willing to enter a long dark space. It was not for the economic benefit of the applicant. Secondly, I wanted to do a quick fact check and I, I don't wanna rely on my memory. Does, does the board or the staff have the DRC comments available to them tonight?
They're not in our package.
No, it's not, uh,
You were, you were told earlier that the DRC had no concerns about this project. And my recollection is that the Conservation Commission at least did have a concern because one of those house lots proposed is almost surrounded by wetlands. So this would be the second time this has happened where you've been given misleading information, if it's true. A few weeks ago, you were told that the Conservation Commission approved the project, we actually recommended you disapprove. So I would like to go on record and encourage applicants to be very accurate in their statements to the board.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I think I need to clarify it. Um, when we, John and I and everyone were talking, we were talking about Page Road. We weren't talking about the site at all or, or the parcel itself. And we're talking about fire, police and, um, school and, and whatever. There was no inference, I believe, on my part, that no board or no staff had, excuse me, staff didn't have any concerns with the subdivision. Because I was in front of you, we did address your concerns as far as the particular lot goes. So I think we're talking about the plan that's in front of you tonight and it has nothing to do with the development of the subdivision itself. So that's, I believe, what John and I were talking about.
And I might have used the wrong words. If I said DRC, I apologize. I meant our, in our initial conceptual meeting before we decided to go forward with the, the actual planning.
Okay, any other members of the public have any input? Seeing that Mary has a motion on the floor to, this would be continued-
Second.
-to November ninth, uh, two thousand eleven, seven P M, right, right here.
So, a motion by Mary, second by Rick. Any discussion by the board?
Yeah, just a couple of com, or at least one comment. Can, or John or Cynthia, can you track down the decision we had on the Pocalese development? And try to, and see if we can find the site plans as well, maybe send them out so we have a chance to look at those before the next meeting? Okay, I think that would be a big help. And then I, you know, I, I agree with Mary's comment about driving out there. I've been out there myself to take a look at it, but I think with Watts Road being in the same situation, it might be worth our while to, uh, drive down that road as well, just to have a little bit more background information on the other gravel road in town.
Yeah, Letha?
One more question, I'm sorry to delay, but I, I have to ask. Has this road ever been considered for private road status? Is that something?
No, not that I'm aware of. Uh, it, it never. It's always been a public class five highway and a-
I'll give away.
I don't think anybody will take it though, right?
I'll give it back.
Trailways.
Yeah.
Because if, if I'm not mistaken, if you take on a, if you turn it into a private road, if there's agreement on all parties to turn it into a private road, then it, the services that the town provides, correct, would then go to the residents of the place, correct? And wouldn't necessarily have to fit to the exact standards, I suppose.
I'm not aware of that ever happening. I'm, I'm sure it's probably happened, but I'm not, it's never happened here within the state of New Hampshire. It's, it'd be very uncommon.
I can, I can see Letha, what people would, what some of the supporters would object to that because then they're losing their frontage of a class five or whatever.
Exactly. I just had to ask the question.
That's a lot of value of the property is the access. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question about the sixty five day clock and whether the applicant needs to agree.
Good point. Where are we with the sixty five? We accepted this as complete, I think, back in July.
In July.
We probably have, uh,
July sixth.
We're past sixty five days.
We probably surpassed that. So what we would need is something written to, uh, extend the, uh, the timeframe.
All right.
But that would be a-
We're asking you to extend the clock or you're asking us to extend the clock?
We're asking you.
Or you're asking us to extend the clock? So I need to write something saying that-
Yeah.
You're asking me to extend the clock?
Correct. That you agreed to extend-
Oh, then we agreed to extend the clock.
Yeah, to extend the clock.
Beyond sixty five days.
Because what would happen is, within sixty five days, we're supposed to give a decision. And I think where we are right now, we, thank you.
I, yeah, I understand.
And you probably should give to a time, you know, an, an additional sixty days or whatever it is, or to a date at some point in the relatively near future. And at that point, the board can ask you again, would you like to extend?
Okay, we will do that.
Okay, so you'll get the letter so that we're on the good side of the sixty five day window. Okay, uh, we do have to vote on this and the vote is to, I mean, the motion is to continue this to November ninth, seven P M. Although, if the favor is satisfied by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Sentenced, chair was affirmative. And, uh, this is the official notice for everyone. The Tammy M. Ronnie, two thousand four Verbal Trust, tax map seventeen lot thirty four for a five lot subdivision is continued to November ninth at seven P M, right here.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, Andre.
And, Mr. Chairman, as, as you are looking at the next item on the agenda, just wondering if it'd be, uh, minimal to the planning board to maybe move up the demolition delay?
Yes.
I don't think it's gonna be a-
The board's in agreement with that, I am anyway. We'll, we'll get that taken care of. So, the two lovely ladies back there that would like to discuss, uh, an amendment to the demolition delay.
Yes, we'll be very quick. Andre wrote it for us. You can show the change.
There it is.
Well, it's one slide, only one. So what we're actually coming in and asking is, we found out, um-
Can you tell us who you are, please?
Kathy Wagner. Do I have to give my address too?
Yes.
Seven Fiddler's Ridge, Kathy Wagner, Seven Fiddler's Ridge Road.
I'm not kidding.
Sue Jodry, twenty three, Peabody Road.
Um, Sue and I are both on the demolition delay committee. Our charter or mission, it was to, uh, we were established, was to protect, um, historic buildings in town. And currently, our ordinance is written for buildings that are fifty years and older that, um, we can put a delay on. But what we're finding is that houses now that were built in the sixties qualify for that. So it puts an, an extra step on the building department. We've recently seen two or three buildings that have absolutely no historic value, but they hit that fifty window. So the homeowner or the property owner or whatever is, is, has to wait, has to go through us, make sure we approve, then the building inspector can give the permit. So we were, as a group, we consensually talked about possibly going up to a hundred years, but we thought, let's try seventy five. We're figuring we'll catch everybody in that seventy five, but it would make sense to go to the seventy five number because there's really not that many homes that are gonna fall into that historic range that are seventy five years and-
Yeah, because I know with the, uh, the task force, the hundred years was the-
Right.
Kind of the, uh,
But when we were writ, we were written at fifty and now if you look at it, a house built in nineteen sixty.
Well, Kathy, why wouldn't you just pick a specific date? Why would you, why wouldn't you just say houses built before nineteen forty?
Because-
Or structures built before a certain date? Because that way you're, you're gonna have to come and ask us every few years to change the number of years.
Well, we could do that, but this was the way the ordinance was written with years when it was originally adopted. So it was just an easy housekeeping to ask for the additional, the additional years versus sitting down. And quite frankly, Mary, I could ask you what year you think is the best year to protect from? I could ask Tom, he might have a different year.
But if you're saying seventy five from today,
Right.
From two thousand and eleven, subtract seventy five and that's your date.
Right.
And then from now on, everything-
But we could have picked a hundred too and we would have done that. We're trying to do it in, in increments of these years because, as a whole, the town has already really established what the historic properties are when we did the historic property task force. But, I mean, if you, I mean, to go to your point, if, um, New Hampshire First Bank wants to tear down, I can't stop them at all because they didn't even qualify in the fifty. But they've got barn beams from the barn. So, you know, are they historic property, you know? So just saying everything built from nineteen forty four on, how do, you know, it doesn't make as much sense as going with the years because of the increments of the years. We figured through the historic properties task force, when we initially built this, it was fifty years. And the reason why it was fifty years back in the nineties was because we were trying to protect the buildings up at the airport. They were probably the last buildings in town that really were at risk and that's why we picked the fifty year number.
So you were looking at houses that were built prior to nineteen forty?
Correct.
No, it's forty six, actually.
Forty six, right, yeah.
Okay, nineteen forty six. So I guess I just don't understand why you're not just saying-
Because I don't think all houses built in nineteen forty six are worth saving. My personal opinion.
No, I know, but I mean, everyone is gonna have to come before you no matter what.
Right, sixteen, right. I mean, so, I mean, so that was why we picked the number, that's why we're staying. I mean, why should I say a house in nineteen forty four is just as important, is more important than a house in nineteen forty five? And that's what this, this timeframe gives us the date to go, I mean, anything seventy five years and under, they have to come to us anyways to get approval. So it's not like we're picking a date, it's just easier.
Yeah, no, it's a-
The way the ord, the way the ordinance was written.
It's just a delay ordinance.
I mean, how do, what, what date do you, okay, let's make it easy. What date do you want?
No, Kath, I'm just-
No, I'm just saying, Mary, that's what you run into when you pick a date. That's why we're just-
Nineteen thirty three, repeal probit.
Maybe some of the others we should discuss.
Right, okay. So Tom wants nineteen thirty three. I happen to think anything nineteen twenty five and under. Sue might think something in the nineteen hundreds or the early eighteen hundreds. So we were just trying to have a conformity of a date.
Certain style.
I didn't think this was gonna turn into this kind of argument. I mean-
It's not an argument, it's a discussion, Kath. I'm just trying to understand.
Okay, discussion? Consensus of the people that serve on the committee came up with a seventy five number, over a hundred. And we decided on seventy five.
And the, the task force, uh, it's all properties of a hundred years are older.
And they're not connected to us at all. We are completely different.
So, so seventy five is younger than that, which is-
So our committee voted on seventy five years. That is why we came up with that number.
And a lot of it was just picking a number because some people say houses built in the sixties or even the seventies. You know, you, you split ranches. It's, uh, you know, another fifty years from now, it could have some historic value.
I mean, if we, if we need to hold a public hearing, the demolition commission, to have everybody come in and give us input over seventy five or a year, we can just scrap this whole thing tonight and go to, start that all over again. But as a board, we really sat down and we thought about it when we were getting, Rick is spending hours of his time sending us emails, waiting for emails, going back and forth, going to sites that have no historic value in this community and holding the process up.
So you want the number to change every single year?
No, we don't.
You want it to go forward every year?
It will. That's what I'm saying. You want it to go forward every year. And that's why we came up with seventy five. At, two, we were actually split. It's two one at a hundred and two one at seventy five.
Right, but I'm saying that next year, a house, say, a house built in nineteen thirty won't qualify anymore. A house built in nineteen thirty one won't qualify the year after.
That is the way it's always been done since nineteen ninety six. That's why we picked fifty.
Well, we could go with-
And that's the way it always worked. But the point is, if a house has got, most of your houses do not fall into- But the point is, if a house has got, most of your houses do not fall into historic properties in that date range.
It's usually what is on the list that is of importance.
Right.
Would it be better for you if you took your seventy-five years and say January one, whatever seventy-five years is, you know?
I mean.
That way, I think that addresses Mary's concern. It doesn't, you don't have to come back in five years or ten years.
Well, I would think the board would probably, you know, consider, you know, if a new board got in and they wanted to come in and change and go back to ten years, they'd have that right. So, I mean, I don't care how you guys want to do it. It's just, we're trying to do this to help the town out, so to speak, and if it's this bad, we can just leave it at fifty. I mean, you know, we don't really care. We were just trying to do this to help out.
Yeah. I mean, it's even, I think, a dilemma for the list of historic properties because there's a lot of, you know, new, well, newer houses that are qualifying for it. And really, what point do you want to say?
I mean.
You know, so, I mean, it's a good discussion for the Heritage Commission, anyway.
I mean, does anybody remember the greenhouse up on where Dunkin' Donuts is now? That ranged. Now, I happen to think that was a Londonderry landmark because it was the ugly greenhouse up there. But, you know, we had to decide if it had any historic value, you know? I mean, so that's when we started coming to conclusions, we were seeing more and more properties like that, that this ordinance really needed to change. And then we went, Sue, you can speak to it because you were the, no, you wanted the hundred.
Oh, no, I, no, well, no, I wanted.
No, you wanted seventy-five.
Yes, I was going to say.
But you could speak to why Jim and everybody else wanted the hundred. George and Jim wanted the hundred because they said there's no, we have a list of historic properties that are in that range, so we really have everything protected anyways. So they wanted a hundred. Sue wanted seventy-five. I didn't care, so I said, let's do a happy meeting, and then we went with seventy-five.
True compromise. Andre.
I guess the question it was have is that the fifty that you have right now has been working?
Yeah, we haven't had any problems.
And say, and obviously, as year by year, that range just keeps on moving up and that's been working. So now, we're just adding another twenty-five years within that range, but that range has been working for the demolition committee.
Well, I mean, if you look at it, fifty years is, what, nineteen sixty?
One.
One. I mean, what's built in nineteen sixty-one?
Okay, so you're adding more buildings to this list by going seventy-five?
That is correct.
Okay.
Because a house built in nineteen sixty-one, I don't believe, right now, unless somebody gets born in it, that, you know.
Yeah, there's plenty of them around.
Right, I mean, that was part of the consideration in going, is the older houses are recognized already? And now we're getting into what originally was constructed in the sixties and seventies here, and if we don't change that number, and that's why we went with the seventy-five, to cover that.
Lynn.
In my opinion, if the committee recommends going to seventy-five years, I think that's what, we look to them to give us that advice, and I will highly agree with their decision to go with that.
I was just going to ask, what do they need from us now? Doesn't it sound?
Basically, what we do if any of the board's consensus is that the seventy-five years works and consistent with the demolition delay committee, then we recommend this goes to public hearing on November.
Yeah, public hearing.
And so we can have this discussion again.
Yeah, recommendation.
And then make a recommendation to town council for, you know, to change the ordinance.
Change the ordinance. So it'll go through quite a few revs of arguing with the date if people don't like it, so.
Why don't you put it at seventy-five now and then, next time you have to change it, you think about a date, you know?
Well, hopefully, I'm not.
Well, you know, you.
Going to still be here in twenty-five years to have to come up with the date.
Just come in with your cane, you know?
Come here. Mean old lady with a cane. But, I mean, you know.
Is the consensus of the board for seventy-five years?
Sure.
So I'd like to make a motion that we move this forward to a public hearing?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Rick. We advance the demolition delay amendment to a public hearing, which would be.
November ninth.
Fourteenth of November, uh, no, ninth of November.
November ninth.
Ninth of November would be public hearing for it.
Okay.
So any further discussion by the board? Seeing that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Sentenced, chair was affirmative. And we'll have a public hearing on it on the ninth of November.
Okay, thank you.
And any new ideas, bring them up at that time. Thank you. Okay, next we have a public hearing on our capital improvement plan. Two thousand thirteen to two thousand eighteen capital improvement program, public hearing.
All right.
Andre.
See, I'll work from the, does everybody have a copy of the plan on their?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And what I'll do is address an issue that I guess Mike brought up as well with regard to page, page four, which has the, you know, the census information. And I know I just am concerned that it might get put forth and I, and I partly agree with them, but the only, the only reason why we didn't amend the census information is that I just wanted to do a wholesale amendment to the CIP document. And once I have all the CIP, I mean, the census information, I want to plug that in as well as the office of energy and, and planning, their projections. So I just could do a wholesale change to the, to this information, this data, as opposed to just adding the new census figure, meaning of twenty-four thousand one twenty-nine for Londonderry. So that's, that's the only reason why you see that change. I do understand what, through email, Mike has indicated that, you know, obviously, you want to have accurate information, the most accurate information as part of this chart, and we're relying on the two thousand census information and the population projections based on that, on that information. But again, I just didn't want to do it in a pieced-up fashion. I would want to do a wholesale change. That's why next year, actually, the next CIP, the two thousand fourteen to two thousand nineteen, the first part of this will include all that data, so.
Okay.
Let's, the board feel strongly that we can, that you want that data changed and we'll, I guess we'll do the best we can in order to change it, but I, again, I would.
Question is, will that data have any influence on what is going into the CIP?
At least for this year, I think what's in there is what's in there, you know, it's going to change.
Do you know what the population is, though, from two thousand and ten?
For Londonderry, it's twenty-four thousand one twenty-nine.
I think we're decreasing.
And Hudson jumped out of us.
Which is about six hundred people less than what was projected, what was estimated for Londonderry for.
From the Office of State Planning. Yeah, one housekeeping thing on the front page is that Dana Coons is a regular member now, and Maria Newman is an alternate.
Yeah.
And who's our, isn't Dana the assistant secretary or is Laura the assistant secretary?
Laura, Laura's assistant, Lena's secretary. That part's right. So just moving Dana up to regular member and then adding Maria.
Laura's name needs to go above, up, in front of assistant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I think that's probably some spacing with word, I guess, whatever it is.
Okay, so, yes, we'll add Maria to the, as an alternate, and we'll move Dana Coon down. Thank you.
Okay, we'll proceed.
Now, with regard to that, now, moving on, what I'll do is that the information that you have with you, just, the only information that is not included in this is this, all the appendix stuff, which is all the request forms, the thick version, and that is online for everybody to take a look at. For tonight, what I'm going to do is concentrate, much like I did on the workshop meeting we held last month, just on the priority projects. So if, so if you mind going to page eleven, and I'll start out with the projects. There are no priority one projects proposed this year. For priority two projects, it starts with the school department, the new S.A.U. building at a hundred thousand in two thousand sixteen, and architectural engineering, and then the construction two thousand seventeen at two point nine million dollars.
Is there a location proposed for that at this point?
Let me see, I believe the existing S.A.U. office, they're going to be adding to the existing location.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that is the case.
Okay, yep, I found it. I just kept reading along.
Mr. Chairman, John Farrell, chairman of the CIP. It's going to be somewhere in campus. This building may be utilized for something else. It may be destroyed, but it'll be somewhere in campus.
Okay.
But it has not been identified.
Within this campus, I am.
Somewhere in campus, school campus, this campus. It's going to be somewhere over here in the middle of town.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you, John. See, that's why I had you stay. Community Development Department, we have the Pet Your Road upgrade. As you know, that project has been on there for quite some time. We're looking at FY thirteen for the funding of this. We are seeking out, there has been introduced another round of the Tiger Funds, which stands for Transportation Improvements Generating Economic Recovery. And so the application is due at the end of this month. We have submitted our pre-application, and so far, so good. We haven't had any feedback. This is that we can't go further, so we'll continue with that process to offset the costs. And we are putting in for eighty percent of the cost of this project. Also, there's an opportunity next month to submit another round for the EDA funds. So as you know, we weren't successful with that the first go-around. We're hoping that with some, hoping to supplement that application and resubmit in November with the help of the Rockham Economic Development Corp.
When does fiscal year thirteen start?
Next, July first next year.
I'll be on the phone with Laura.
The next priority two project would be the, actually, I've been meeting them, and it should just be the Route one oh two corridor plan update, not the twenty-eight, because as you know, the board, we updated the twenty-eight corridor plan last year, actually, say, the beginning of this year. So the Route one oh two corridor plan with this would be the hundred and forty thousand dollar figure that you have there for FY thirteen. That corridor plan was last updated in two thousand two, so it is in dire need of upgrading. Another priority two project is the Highway Division, roadway rehab reconstruction at nine million dollars.
Oh, how much of that have we?
And I believe the, I believe that the CIP committee had recommended a million dollars be put into CIP, be funded, as requested. It was one point, one point five requested. The CIP committee recommended one million dollars to be funded.
Okay, so that means we got nine more years to go?
Correct.
Or, because I know we've had two bonds, haven't we, Yannis, on the highway program?
No, I think more than that.
Could be, could be more. John?
We've had four bonds. We're still using the same formula that we've used in the past, although I'm not sure of the process this year with the change of how we would put money back in. If it doesn't pass at the polls, I'm not sure if that's possible or not. We still have to clarify that when we go through our budget process. But as of right now, it's one million dollars. That's all the, that's all the committee would recommend per year.
Okay.
For six years.
But we've already appropriated through bonds, four million.
Four years, four million. Four, four bonds for a million, million-ish. One was for one point five million.
I think first year was one point two and then one point five and then million after that.
So we've probably spent about four point six million dollars on road restoration.
Okay.
And as John, and John mentioned already, that with the new form, we don't have opportunity to put in money back, and I, and a budget line for road construction is zero. So let's pray that the bond passes because if, if we don't have any, I spoke with Dave the same, as John was pointing out, that some kind of backup article. So we might have, that we'll put some money in the road reconstruction in a line for the, in a budget, and if bond passes, then that money will be eliminated or whatever, or keep cut.
Okay.
I'll vote for keeping.
Make sure of us.
All right, and the next project is the Highway Division, the Highway Garage Improvement. I know at the workshop meeting, the CIP committee and the planning board just had some questions regarding the increase in price, and I think Yannis addressed that at the last meeting. If, I don't know, if you could just reiterate what that, what that was.
The question was if the cost of the project went up to two hundred sixty thousand dollars. No, that was always the same price, but in a previous CIP, we submitted whatever, we have an expendable maintenance trust fund because that's what is available. That's what we are using to build. We are trying to build in phases. We will not go for a million dollar bond or two million dollar bond to build facility. So first was to build a salt shed. The second to build, the second phase was to build a driveway. And now, the third phase, we subdivided to, to again, two sub-phases and tried to build, at that time, I had only available hundred and ten thousand dollars to see if we can just build a foundation to addition to the garage and then build a shell on top of that. But when you see that it's two hundred sixty thousand dollars, always the same cost of the project. But when you see how the money is coming from, where's the money coming from, is for expendable maintenance trust, expendable account.
And the last of the priority two project is the Fire Department Replacement, the Emergency and Medical Equipment, hundred forty thousand dollars, which is proposed for next year, FY two thirteen. The priority three project, School District Auditorium, scheduled for A and E in two thousand eighteen at five hundred thousand dollars, and the site preparation, construction in the following years.
Pretty much the same numbers as last, same numbers as last year, wasn't it?
I believe so. You had a million dollars for site preparation, fifteen million dollars for the construction last year. I believe the, I believe the numbers were comparable. The School District, district-wide renovation, two point six million dollars, scheduled for first year is FY seventeen for that project, and that's proposed to be unpaid by bond. Fire Department, central fire station renovations at one point eight million dollars, and that's scheduled for two thousand fourteen engineering and two thousand fifteen construction. The Community Development Department, the G.I.S. upgrade and maintenance, a hundred sixty, we're proposing there'd be a reserve fund, a capital reserve fund. We know that we're going to be doing, we just want to portion the cost over the six-year period at sixty-two thousand dollars annually because we know that a flight will be needed in order to update our information and then obviously the subsequent digitization of that information, the input into our G.I.S. system. So it's recommended that the thirty-two dollar, thirty-two thousand dollars annually up to FY eighteen, which will do the work at that point in time. Priority three would be, the next one would be the Conservation Commission, Open Space Protection, two million dollars. I believe that the Capital Improvement Committee had recommended that this be funded at five hundred thousand dollars a year for a period of five years, oh, four years, I'm sorry, four years. So it's for two million dollars.
Five years.
I don't know if Mike wanted to add any information on that.
You want to add anything, Mike?
No, there, the reason that we proposed it the way we did was to match the recommendations of the open space plan. That was designed to keep a level, level effort, a level of funding that was the same as it is now through future years. But, you know, that's done in a silo of just looking at that particular expenditure. But the CIP, I think, the committee did was look at all of the expenditures and then use that two million dollars and move it around a little bit so that they could even out the, you know, the total burden on the town, which makes a lot of sense. So I don't see any reason not to go forward with the committee's recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, the priority three project, Public Works and Engineering Recovery Way Drop Off Center Improvements, seventy-five thousand, and that's to do the paving of the recovery way. Another priority three project of Public Works and Engineering Environmental Division, South Londonderry Sewer, Phase Two, two point five million dollars, which is supposed to which is supposed to be a bond and private developer contribution FY15. And I'm sorry, on the drop-off center above, I'm sorry, I didn't mention the year for that funding, it would be FY13. And the South London Dairy Sewer, Phase 2, FY15.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, can I ask Andre a quick question about this, the sewer? The South London Dairy Sewer, is that Route 102 South? Or is that, can you just clarify for me, being new to the party here?
Actually, it's from.
John, why don't you get the microphone back there?
You know where Constitution and Capitol Hill is?
Not really.
Nevin's.
Nevin's, yeah.
You know where Nevin's is?
Yeah.
Basically, it would be to the west of Nevin's, heading north. So, again, it goes up Capitol Hill, McAllister, crosses 102, and comes up by Winding Pond.
Okay.
That's Phase 2 of South London Dairy Intercept.
Okay. My guess, my question is, do we have, did we ever get sewer going down 102? Because I know that that was, years ago, we tried to do that, and I'm a little confused where we're at with that.
When you say going down 102, where are you talking about, Maria?
I guess, I'm really not sure. I remember something from years ago.
Down by Avanti's, in that area?
Yes, I remember we were trying to tie in with Century Village. They were, they were looking to do sewers, and we tried, we put sewers on the.
That's the face, that's the face, this is the face you're talking about.
Is this the face?
This was discussed. There was that time when Nevin's wasn't built yet. Nevin's came and built the first phase of South 2, by building a pumping station and a force main. Then Woodman Apartments came and built to Constitution and Capitol section on their own, because again, we didn't have funds, and then, and the rest is still, this is according to the facility plan that we have. And the rest will cross 102, go to the Century Village, behind the Shaws and the, and the Batrick Village, no, Batrick Village.
Right.
Old Dairy Home.
Okay, so that's what I'm recalling from years ago.
Yeah, that's, this is the face.
Okay, so that would actually help our economic development a little bit on 102, wouldn't it?
Yeah, because, you know, people could tie to it, you know, in a, in a different locations, yeah.
I'm, okay, glad to see that.
Like, this, this is consistent with our facility plan, sewer facility plan, all the next sewer projects that you see.
Okay.
They've been for years already in a, in a facility plan.
Great, thank you for explaining that.
All right, we've been carrying these about six to eight years, I think, on the plan. These sewer plans, we've been carrying them about six to eight years, right? So, essentially, what you want to happen is, is that if further development goes on closer to the crossroads area and everything, what we would be looking for is participation from developers, and from the people who would be benefiting from the sewer, in order to bring the interceptor all the way down to the intersection. But until that happens, it's probably gonna, you know, stay here in the plan.
Okay, thank you.
What's that, Maria?
Thank you, yeah.
Okay.
All right, the next Priority 3 project, Public Works Engineering Environmental Division, Mammoth Road Sewer Replacement Portion 385-875, proposed to be paid by bond, access fees and private developer contribution for fiscal year 2015. And I'll take it from, and I'll read the description. Replacement of the sewer, section of sewer infrastructure in the Mammoth Road near the intersection of Mammoth and Sanborn, consistent with the town's facility, sewer facilities plan, adopted by the town 2005.
Would they take it to a, a school?
No, this is, this is an upgrade of that existing.
Oh, okay.
This is from that pumping station going north to a tunnel. The drainage line has to be upgraded.
Oh, good. More capacity? Okay.
All right, now we get into the Priority 4 projects. Public Works Engineering Sewer Division, Plaza 28 Sewer Pump Station Replacement, three point one million doll, three, three million one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I, obviously, that's a replacement of existing pump station at Plaza 28. That's proposed to be a access fee and bond. And that's scheduled for FY218. Public Works Engineering Sewer Division, Mammoth Road North Sewer, sewer extension, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred dollars. Next, the extension of the sewer infrastructure in the Mammoth Road area of the North Village, consistent with the town's sewer facility plan. Funding source, bond and access fees.
Okay, exactly where that is going, is it on Long Mammoth Road?
This is from Page and Granier going north.
Okay.
It was Merrill, Merrill's Farm.
Yeah.
That was the old extension that was proposed in facility plan.
Yes, okay.
And and the last item was, was an item that the town manager asked to put on there and apologize for the lateness, but the, then this has, in regards to the, it's not within the program year, meaning that it's not within the 2013 to 2018. It's outside the program year, 2019. But that is for the, accommodate the expansion of the senior center, renovation, expansion, the existing senior center off of Mammoth Road, at six hundred thousand dollars. And that's the current sewer, senior center is in need of expansion and improvement. Their proposal includes enlarging and renovating the current senior center, located at 535 Mammoth Road. The following improvements is, in addition, have been identified, addition of a multipurpose health outreach room, two adjoining small meeting rooms for art games, meeting room and other programs, storage and office space, as well as expanded renovated kitchen, bathroom, parking. Funding source, general fund, proposed year 2019.
So, this came up at the LA Affairs Committee meeting when I was in attendance. They didn't under, they, with the switching directors, they really didn't understand the process. So, I asked them if they would contact Andre and talk to Dave, and see if, because what they would like to be able to do is go after grants for funding and things like that. Being within the CIP and loaded into the document, it puts us in a better position for grants.
Okay, thank you.
So, again, it wouldn't be in the program year. Next year, possibly, it could be workers' way into the program year, but right now, it's just outside.
So, it's 2019.
And the, and then the only other addition, and I, if you could, I'll tell you what page, let's see if you can scroll to, would be to page 19, which is the matrix. Boy, I'm sorry, you can't see that very well, but in 2018, under replacement of, actually, fire equipment, the reserve, capital reserve fund, fire equipment trucks, in 2018, you have three hundred and fifty thousand dollars identified in 2018 in that line. Again, the town manager asked me to add that to the, to that line under capital reserve, as a result of the, as an outcome of the issue on, I believe, Hemlock Lane, identify what are some of the fire needs in order to make sure that that issue, equipment-wise, can be addressed. So, this, you know, so this item was added to the, to the matrix in 2018. And I believe some additional clarification as we work our way towards 2018. Additional information will be submitted in subsequent CIP committees, but that was added as a result of that, at that discussion at the town council level, and town manager translated that to an item on the CIP matrix. Other than that, everything is, as we discussed at the workshop meeting, represented here at the public hearing. The full, obviously, the full copy of the CIP program will be presented to the, if approved by the planning board, will be submitted to the town council, school board and budget committee for consideration in the upcoming budget. And obviously, it would be, if the board so choose, it would be, to approve it, it would be approved as amended, you know, with the items that were identified on the front cover, as well as any of the items that were covered in the body of the document.
Okay.
So, just final words from the committee is, is that this was done with the eyes on the community and the economy, and looking at, you know, being conservative from the standpoint of, you know, understanding the needs going out into the future, but also understanding the burden on the taxpayers today. So, that was the overarching message from the community back through the report to the planning board. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? I'll start with Rebecca.
I'm all set. Andre, I just wonder if you could help me. For example, the school district, SAU office. What size building are they gonna be building for three million dollars?
I don't have that information. I can get it for you if you want. I can get the request form.
Because I look. Yeah, I got the request form, yeah. It doesn't say.
They don't have it on there?
It doesn't say. That's, that's my concern. I was just wondering why you come up, and I know it's not. This has been the number for years.
Right. Here's what they've shared with us over the years, is, is that the, they are at something like a hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty percent capacity in this building, and would expect that the new building would be fifty to sixty percent larger than the current building. That's sort of what's been shared over the last couple of years. There's been, there's been a number of recommendations that the school has talked about in the different meetings. So, I don't think that, I think if they can come up with an alternative that's less money, I think they would probably go down that path, based on what they've presented to us over the last few years.
Because, I mean, you know, when I read the application, you know, a couple of things that kind of stick out is, "Also, due to growth of the school district, overcrowding has led to poor working conditions and inefficient operations." Well, I'm not sure, but I think it's been 2002 since when the school district population started to go down. So, I don't know what they mean by growth, and I know that the employees have gone down. Again, I'm not questioning you guys, because this is the submission.
Yeah, I don't either. I would probably say that since nobody presented this year. So, every year, we offer for people to come in and present. Last year, only, only a couple of people presented. This year, nobody came in to present. I would, I would venture to say that this was just moved along and not updated with that type of information.
Yeah, and nothing reduces long-term operating cost. Problem I have with something like that is, it's three million dollars, but compared to what? Compared to fixing that, compared to leasing somewhere else, or? I think that's important to know, or buying something that's already in existence.
You're right, all those questions have been asked in the past. Some of the feedback that we've received is, is that they're looking to do something in, as I said before, in campus. We've, we've received information along the lines of, you know, whether this is a healthy environment to work in, whether this building should be torn down and start over, whether the footprint of this building should be gutted and used for another use, and that the SAU office should move into a current existing facility. I think it's a fluid plan. I think they're looking to do something different. But I think, based on no presentation and everything, I would be shocked if this went to the ballot.
Yeah.
Given it's, I guess, given this timing, FY16 is what they're looking for, engineering funds. So, obviously, next year, there will be an opportunity for the CIP Committee to firm up some of those, those issues that you raised.
Maybe the school to reevaluate what the, what the needs are.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, just to say, you know, we need a three million. I think you really should be starting with, you know, we need a building for forty people, or whatever the number is, you know, and we need space for it. But just want to point out one other thing, too. I saw this on the state DOR website, because they note here that state building aid of forty percent of the annual payment, annual debt payment, is available if they build a, a new building. But according to the state website, school building aid is only available in buildings which houses an SAU office and which the SAU, which the school district owns the land. Well, according to the assessor's office, the city owns, the town owns the land, not the SAU, the school district, so.
So, if they were to move across.
You couldn't rebuild there and get forty percent. You'd have to rebuild somewhere else.
Or deep inland.
If they would have moved across the street.
Yeah, you could, but, you know, it's something that should be looked at. You shouldn't just assume things like that.
I know that there's been a lot of controversy about this building that we're in right now, but does anybody remember how much it cost?
Four million.
Four.
Okay. And how many employees does it hold, do you know?
Keeps going down every year.
I know, but when it was originally built.
Yeah, around a hundred and twenty.
That many?
At one time. But it's, it has decreased.
Yeah, this is, you know, I mean, as you probably remember, this is a different kind of building, from the standpoint of this is where we house all the revenue, all the records, do the business of the town. And, you know, the requirements for this building would be different than one for an SAU office.
I don't want to.
Frankly, with the, with the school not coming and presenting, I, I think this is probably a placeholder more than anything else. And I think those are valid questions that probably need to be addressed going into the future.
Yeah, probably next year is the time to, or really evaluate what the school needs are.
But by the same token, John, it would be a building where they would be housing all of their records. Right now, they house them in the beach underneath the high school, so, you know.
I, I, I understand. As stated, this is a high-traffic building, collecting almost a hundred million dollars in revenue a year, and then distributing that among the town. Their purposes and uses are far different from what the towns are.
They are.
So, I can't really speak to exactly what they need. I would probably assume it'd be something less than what we're doing here.
Mm-hmm.
Well, but on the same token there, a three million dollar building that houses records, let's get a ten thousand dollar scanner and some, you know, data storage, you know?
We could do that here, too.
Yeah, we could, but, you know, but if we made a mistake here, it doesn't mean we gotta repeat it.
Well, that's why I was asking how much this building cost, because I know there's been a lot of controversy about this building.
No, I'm just saying, I, I just don't see any, you know.
We'd like to keep it interesting.
I see three million dollar requests, and nobody says we've got how many employees going in there, or how much, you know, space we need. I think, you know, you wouldn't do that with a bathroom renovation, but we can do this with tax dollars. This is what just gets me.
So, Andre, I was wondering where the four point five million that we have to hold, have a placeholder for.
Have some goddamn respect for the.
4A is on the, on the sheet.
Actually, if you were to go to your let me try to think of the page that it is on.
I know that it's mentioned as one of the priorities. It's like Priority 4, and it's mentioned in the, in the, but is there any place on the, on the summary of all the capital projects? Is there any place where that four point five million dollars shows up as a placeholder? Do you know what I'm talking about, Sid?
The 4A, it's 4A, right. Yes, it's on page 19. In the notes regarding previously appropriated 4A project, page 19.
On page 23, on the financing plan.
Thank you. I just, I didn't get that part, so thank you.
I think they got three floors. That's at exit five.
You got a basement.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah.
Oh.
They have a little showing, too.
Would it be two floors and a basement?
Yeah, I think, because the assessor's got it at eighty-five.
We don't count basement areas, though.
Yeah.
But there is a basement.
I found it.
But you could use.
Been answered. So, Mr. Chairman, what about?
Yes, okay. Anything else, Tom?
Nope.
Okay, Larry?
I'm good.
You're good. Lynn?
I'm all set.
Okay, Laura?
No more questions.
Okay, Nathan?
Nope, no more questions.
I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, anyone for the public? Any questions, comments or concerns dealing with the capital improvement plan as presented tonight? Mike?
I've carefully read through Yanos's detailed plan every year, and the way I read it, we're actually depreciating our roads more than we are improving them every year, just because of the funding limits that we have. Is that a fair statement or not?
Yeah.
And, and we are, we are bonding a million dollars a year that we're paying back over, I don't know, ten or twenty years, on an asset that I think fully depreciates if we follow Yanos's plan, which is the low-cost approach in twelve years. So, it seems to me that highway maintenance probably should be a recurring budget line item, and not a capital line. We may need to continue doing this borrowing to get caught up for a while. But we, we haven't faced the true cost of what that is. Or alternatively, thought through, is there some other way we can do roads? I mean, the idea of private roads, or, you know, twenty-four, twenty-six foot roads throughout town, whatever the case might be.
Go for toll roads, you know?
Yeah, right. I could see that, right off the exit, so it would help a lot. But, in other words, there's, there's, I think, some hard questions to be asked there. I, I think that the road maintenance plan that we're on, while it's the best that can be had under the circumstances. be had under the circumstances, is not sustainable, and we ought to face that fact, not to change the CIP for this year, but, but it seems like now would be a good time to, to open that discussion and, and say, what, what, what should we really be budgeting to maintain our roads? And are we willing to pay that? And if not, what are we willing to give up?
I think, I know in the past, in my time, the town council and board of selectmen, it was always an expense, you know, for, for highways. And it wasn't until, I think, about four years ago that we started, you know, bonding. But, but I mean, you know, roads are part of infrastructure, it is an asset, it's a depreciating asset, which is not the best type of assets to have.
There are two lines in that.
But, but I know when it's a line, line item in the operating budget, it can be cut very easily, and that what has happened in the past also has been cut, and that's one area where the budget has been skimmed on, and, and to keep taxes down, you tend to let the roads deteriorate, and I think it got away from us a little bit, and that's why we're in the process of, of bonding it. But, I mean, my own feeling, bonding is not the best way to go with, you know, highway maintenance and, you know, highway building.
Should we go back to the history on it? Why we did this? Okay, so about five years ago, we were doing about two hundred thousand dollars a year in, in maintenance line items. What came to the, to the committee was, and this came out the direction of the town council, with Yanos's insistence is that we were spending two hundred thousand dollars a year, and he was barely able to do minor repair work when major reconstruction of multiple roads needed to be done throughout the community. The decision was made at that time by the town council to move a bond to the ballot so that we could, you know, make up that time so that we could be able to do the, the end of, the end of that period of time. And I think the first one that came to us was for six years, and it's because it's been a successful program and approved by the voters multiple times, that's why the CIP continues to carry it at a million dollars a year. Very good point on your part is, is that, you know, it can be easily cut through the budget process, it can be changed now in the new deliberative session, and, you know, what the reasoning behind it was is that we asked the voters what they want for roads in town, and they make a decision year to year. That was the whole philosophy behind it. So did I leave anything out?
No, and I, I'm very grateful that, because every year, so far, voters, you know, realize that we have to keep up and voted to, to give us the, to pass the bond. But I think what Mike was also referring, it's the maintenance, because if we don't have money in a maintenance item, which is the shim and overlay, and we get six hundred thousand dollars from the state in a block, the form of the block money grant, now, that puts us only in a ninety-year maintenance cycle, we should be in a twelve-year cycle. So that's why we can keep up with them with the maintenance. The roads that we are not keeping up, they will deteriorate to the point that they will need reconstruction. So we have to fund more money in the maintenance, otherwise we are sliding back with those ones, that they are still in good shape, but I don't have enough money to maintain them. So I'm using the money from the bond just to reconstruct the road that they were falling apart to the point that they have to be reconstructed, but I am losing battle with the roads that are still in first shape, because every twelve years, you should at least overlay the road. Pavement gets brittle because oxidizes, and if you don't keep up, start cracking and so on, and now costs more money. So I think that's what, we don't budget enough in the operating budget for maintenance of the roads, and aligned with was reconstruction was removed and put on a, as a, as a
But in year ten, and year, every year after that, if you keep adding a million dollars, you're going to have basically a debt surplus of a million dollars in the operating budget every year going forward. One, the first year bond's going to fall off in year eleven, but your weapon, you know, your new bond is coming on.
I am.
And every year after that, once you hit year ten, it's going to be like that, a million dollars out of the operating budget versus your two hundred thousand.
Can I, can I ask a question while we're on the subject of highways? Page twelve indicates the, the one point five, let me find it, one point five million annually for roadway rehab, reconstruction of roadways, like we're talking about, but yet on the graph on page nineteen, it basically budgets out a million every year. Am I seeing something incorrect?
That was not recommended by the planning board, by the CIP committee, four million bucks, not one point five, as requested.
Okay.
Originally, I requested two million dollars a year, then it was dropped to one point five, now it's one. Don't change that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was reading that right.
Ask for three next year.
How much should we reconstruct a road on page?
Just a part of clarification, I, I was, given the information that actually town hall costs two point five million dollars as opposed to four million dollars.
Thank you.
Two point five million?
Two point five.
That was part of the on-the-bus, or article that year, because I think it was a town hall.
Police station and open space.
Police station all, all at once, and that was, and now there's legislation that forbids that. Submitted by Bessie McKinney, yeah, passed.
So what do we need to do with the CIP movement to their town?
So I just, I just want to make sure that everyone from the public has had their input. I don't hear any more. What we need to do is to adopt the capital improvement plan for two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen.
The summer.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Lynn, any further discussion from the board? Seeing that all of them have a signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote say nay, senators, chairman's affirmative, and we have adopted the CIP, which is required by the planning board by statute. And it's up to the town council, as being a policy body, school board, along with the input from budget committee to determine how they so want to spend the money. But this really has most of its, I think, usefulness is with our growth management ordinance, we, it's required.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seeing all the business, I guess I have a motion to adjourn by Mary, second by Lynn, all those who have a signature, if I was saying aye.
Aye.